Just have a few guidelines that we'd like to ask for your assistance with. Please silence or turn off your cell phones if you have yours with you. If you're here to speak on an item and are not the applicant, please fill out one of these forms available outside or down front with the information that you'd like to speak on and provide that to Elena or Jared, our staff, people down here below and sitting in front of us. When that item is heard, you'll be called upon to come to the podium. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak on your item. If you're here to speak on an item with a large group of people, we encourage you to elect a representative to share your group's concerns, and in that case, some additional time will be given to that person, a few extra minutes. When several speakers are being heard on the same item, we ask that you just do your best to limit comments and concerns to those that we haven't heard yet, and we reserve the right to limit extensive and repetitious comments. And then, lastly, on this item, just direct all your comments to the planning commission, your questions or your comments, and if needed, we'll ask for the applicant or staff to provide a response. Lastly, we just appreciate everyone's presence here today and the time that you took away from your obligations and work, and we just ask for your assistance in upholding the decorum of the meeting. And please do not speak from the audience. Please come to the podium to speak. So with that, we'll move to item two on the agenda, which is receipt of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to receive the minutes of the November 14, 2024 meeting.
A motion to receive the minutes. That's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Minutes are received. Item three, continuance requests.
We have several uncontested requests. Item 25 is PUD 2045, request to defer to January 9. Item 26, SP 591, defer to January 9. Item 27, case SPUD 1666, defer to January 9. Item 28, SPUD 1685, defer to January 9. Item 29, case SPUD 1673, defer to January 9. Item 30, case SPUD 1683, defer to January 23. Item 31, case SPUD 1675, defer to March 23. And item 32, case PC 10945, has been withdrawn.
All right, I'll just confirm that there's no one here to be heard on any of those items. All right, seeing none, I just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on the continuous request to approve the uncontested requests as read.
The motion from Commissioner Noble. It's been seconded by Commissioner Purvett. Please cast your votes. And those continuances are approved. New requests.
Item 15, case SPUD 1687, request to defer to January 9. Item 19, case PUD 2043, defer to January 9. Item 21, SPUD 1694, defer to January 9. Item 23, case C 7692, defer to January 23. And item 24, case PC 10950, also defer to January 23.
All right, is there anyone here to be heard on those items? All right, just need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new request as read.
The motion from Commissioner Noble to approve the new continuance request is read. That's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the new requests are approved. Brings us to item four, public curings and the consent docket.
Item one is case C 7701, final plat of the canyon's phase three, located east of South Sarah Road and north of southwest 59th Street. Item two, case C 7702, final plat of Shiraz Vineyard, located north of southwest 149th Street and east of South Portland Avenue. Item three, case C 7703, final plat of Cypress Plains Phase One, located south of northwest 164th Street and east of North Council Road. And finally, item four, case C 7704, final plat of Quail Business Park, located south of northwest 150th Street and east of North May Avenue.
Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on any of the items on the consent docket? All right, seeing none, just looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent docket.
The motion from Commissioner Noble to approve the consent docket is read. We're waiting on our system. It's spinning. All right, let's do this. It's been moved by Commissioner Noble, seconded by Commissioner Meek. Okay, please cast your votes. All right, the consent docket is approved. So now we move on to items requiring a separate vote and item number five.
This is case C 7693, final plat of Curry Acres, located south of East Wilshire Boulevard and west of North Martin Luther King Avenue.
Is the applicant present?
Jared Crittenbrink with Kim Lee Horn, the engineer of record for this development. And then, we also have President, the owner's representative, Dusty Bourne, as well, who's sitting back there. If you guys remember from last time, we agreed to meet with some of the surrounding property owners of this development to kind of describe it and discuss it in greater detail. We did have an in-person meeting with them on November 20 to go through things. Mr. Heisey, who is here as well, sent out a nice summary of kind of their concerns after that meeting that he provided us, and then Mr. Bourne kind of responded to some of those. That email was included in the agenda, which you guys should have received, which kind of gave the highlights of that meeting and the local and surrounding residents' issues or concerns. Mr. Bourne responded to Mr. Heisey's email on Tuesday via email. It was sent over to Mr. Martin and the planning staff. I don't know if you guys have seen that. So I'll just give a kind of a quick summary of a couple of the highlighted points that we discussed and hopefully kind of put some of their concerns, them as the residents, at ease. One issue was with privacy, right? They wanted to maintain as many trees as possible, and then also, right, just looking to preserve that tree line and just kind of, you know, concerned about maybe visual issues between their backyards and this property. It goes back to the fact that we don't currently have, you know, buyers. We have potential buyers, but to have buyers, right, we would need to have it platted and would have to have them signed up for those properties. I want you to keep in mind, this is a, you know, about a seven, a 12, and a 20-acre lot. So privacy is obviously going to be of a concern to them. This is not a major subdivision where we're talking about doing a bunch of one-acre lots and clearing a bunch of trees. I think we can all understand, if you're going to buy a lot that size, you're going to want that lot for, you know, the scenery, the landscaping, the trees around there. So we anticipate, right, it would be minimal, you know, clearing needed for their residence. Each of these lots, right, per code, R1, would only be allowed to have one home. So another concern they had was, you know, that this would turn into a major subdivision or multifamily. Well, we all know that if it's going to be a major subdivision, that's going to require preliminary plat. That's then going to have to go back through planning commission. It's going to have to go back through city council. Same thing, if this was going to be multifamily, it is not zoned for multifamily. So it could not do that. It had to go back through the whole rezoning process. So hopefully that put, you know, kind of some of those concerns with them at ease. And then another issue was access. We described that there is only one point of access, and it's off of the existing drive. So we are actually going to be utilizing that existing drive. There will be no more curb cuts onto northeast 70th Street slash Prospect because we're kind of situated on that corner. You know, they brought back up just wanting to make sure that we weren't adding any additional roads or anything through that. We are not. It's a private drive that's going to be in an access easement that is off of an existing curb cut and drive. So no new curb cuts on northeast 70th Street. And then they also brought up, you know, Mr. Heisey brought up a really good point. You know, he was concerned because, you know, Superior Construction Management, they went in and they had a piece of property near them. I don't know the whole story about that as far as he was saying, you know, zoned R1. They did a bunch of work on that that I don't know with in compliance or not in compliance with R1, but these are for residences. This isn't, you know, any type of commercial development, and I would think, you know, for that to happen, right, you would have to get it rezoned. So these are for three separate residential homes. One of the sites already has a home on them. The two other lots, the 12-acre and the 20-acre, are for just single residence homes. So, yep, I think that kind of summarizes where we landed on everything, and I don't know if any of you guys have any questions for me at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Crittenbrink?
Just a few. Number one, I want to say, I know that we have, I have neighbors from Ravenswood Manor who are here, and I just want to assure them that, yes, that continuance was granted. So we won't be hearing that case today, so I wanted to make clear that they knew that. But in keeping with this case, I appreciate you visiting with the neighbors. I think our neighbors here have signed up to speak?
I have one, yes.
Okay, well, why don't we hear from them and see where we are?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Braden Heisey.
Good afternoon. My name is Braden Heisey. I live at 1801 Northeast 69th Street. I'm the vice president of the Persimmon Hills Neighborhood Association, which the boundaries are northeast 63rd on the south, Wilshire on the north, MLK on the east, and Kelly Avenue on the west. Thanks to the planning commission, a meeting was held on November 20 between the concerned parties, and an email was sent by me on November 23 summarizing our concerns as neighbors. He replied to that on November 25, saying that he will pass that along to prospective buyers. I need to underscore that the overarching concern here is that these 40 acres compose a large portion of Persimmon Hill, and any overdevelopment will gut the wooded nature that we have and enjoy there. The current ownership group, their interest only goes so far as they can get it platted and sold off. Okay, great, it's R1. So should the subsequent buyers come back before this commission, we are asking that the planning commission preserve the R1 status and protect the character of our neighborhood. We do ask that our November 23 email be passed along to any prospective buyers so that they can understand what kind of neighborhood they're getting into, and we hope our new neighbors will indeed take it to heart and comfortably settle into our neighborhood. We look forward to welcoming these new neighbors with their large acreage estates, and with that in mind, we really do not oppose the final plating as is currently presented. Thank you for your time.
Were there any questions? Excuse me. Well, I just have a statement. I appreciate your request to pass it along. I don't believe they're under, we can't require them to do that, and I don't believe they're under any obligation, but I think that's all I had to say on that.
Well, I'll just add, thank you for visiting with him, and I do want everyone in the neighborhood to be aware that because it's a plat, I'm not allowed to participate in any public meetings about it. So I just want to be clear that I would have loved to have been there and been a part of it, but could not. But I think that this is a good resolution. It sounds like your concerns have been addressed. Again, I'm glad that the applicant did point out that it doesn't change the zoning, so no commercial, nothing like that. So I do, if you're satisfied, then that sounds like we're ready to move forward, so.
Satisfied as it stands right now, it's the next iteration.
And you know, we can't prevent any future property owner from making that rezoning request, but of course, it'll be a public hearing and publicly noticed and all of that. So if that's what they wanted to do, but it sounds like the plan is residential anyway.
I'm putting in the time right now to show you how concerned we are about the subsequent owners, so, and hopefully that won't be an issue, and we won't see each other again in this capacity.
I'm going to keep my fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I'm ready to move, Mr. Chairman, to approve of C 7693.
A motion to approve of C 7693. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. That item is approved. Item six.
Item six is case C 7699, preliminary plat of the enclave at Oakdale. This is located north of East Hefner Road and west of North Coltrane Road and a variance to section 5.3.1, point D, point five of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. Jessica Bloy with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant. The preliminary plat before you today is for the enclave at Oakdale. If you recall, the PUD for this property was before you back in August, and that was unanimously recommended for approval. The layout that is before you today is in conformance with the PUD and matches the site plan that was approved. So the proposed development, this will be a private gated development. It will have 47 duplex lots, and staff has recommended approval. We are in, we agree to all of the TEs, and I am happy to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward.
Do you want to say anything about the need for the variance?
Yes, I would. So the variance, we are, the variance is to not provide a stub street to the north or the south. Because this is a private gated development, this is a private street, and so we, it is our preference that we do not stub to the south, and the north is very difficult.
How, do we know enough about PUD 429 and how that's zoned? Is it residential as well? Like, is there any compatibility issue there? I know you'd be making your neighbors a little bit further north very happy to not have a street stub to the north, so this commission would save me probably a headache if we didn't do that, but, but the south?
Frontier City.
Is that industrial or?
Do we know, Sarah?
429.
Was it like Frontier City Bone Garden?
That's it, that was it. Okay, I knew there was a compatibility issue of some kind, I just didn't know what it was. But I'm in support of the variance. I'd love to hear commissioners' thoughts, and obviously, we had a lengthy debate and discussion about this in numerous community meetings, so I don't know that there's any objection to the development itself. And I'm going to go ahead and move the variance, approval of the variance, to section 5.3.1, point D, point five of the subdivision regulations.
All right, that's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Approves the variance, now the item.
Mr. Chairman, I move to move approval of C 7699.
A motion from Commissioner Pennington to approve the item. It's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the item is approved. Item seven.
This is case C.
We did.
Case C 7700, preliminary plat of Frisco Park, located north of southwest 59th Street and west of South Frisco Road.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Kendall Dillon. This is a preliminary plat for a tract that Kendall and I came through in 2022 to rezone into a PUD. The PUD has a base zoning of R.A. with a minimum lot size of one acre. The plat before you complies with all regulations contained within the PUD as well as the subdivision regulations. There were two letters that were submitted in protest. If you read the letters, they read a lot like zoning concerns, but with that said, Kendall did reach out to them. One of the letters talked about concerns with groundwater. Kendall has pulled all the wells, all the logs from around the area. We have no concern. We believe that there's adequate capacity and pressure in that area. So with that said, we agree with all the TEs. The plat complies with subregs as well as the PUD.
Commissioner Meek, this is Ward three.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I believe this complies with the original PUD and with the recommended stop approval, and I'm accepting all the TEs unless someone signed up to speak or any other commissioners have anything.
No.
Okay, I'd like to recommend approval of C 7700.
This is just an approval?
Yes, sorry.
I have a motion from Commissioner Meek to approve the item. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Item eight.
This is KCE 1133, application to close and vacate portions of the east-west alley in block 36 of Maywood Edition, and platted right-of-way of northwest 6th Street, east of north Walnut Avenue, and north of northeast 5th Street.
Good afternoon.
Hey. Olin Cook with the Alliance for Economic Development, 105 North Hudson, Suite 101. Here to kind of explain, Okira, Oklahoma City Urban Renewal acquired this property from ODOT, and we're here today just trying to vacate the street and alley in preparation for future development.
Do any commissioners have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I do have one ask, I guess, the TE for the, I guess, the topographical survey and the as-bills for the alley, for that to be waived.
For that to be waived?
Yeah, I mean, on the application itself, it says optional, so just kind of think it would be a fair ask.
I'd like to hear from Public Works if they have any comment or concern with that request.
Oh, and that's, that's been, that's a standard that we've asked on all of these now.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I have a comment. I don't think we should remove the TE.
Okay. It is, it is kind of standard language.
I mean, I understand that. It's kind of, for us, though, I mean, if it's optional, I mean, I think it should be considered optional.
You said that the, that optional language is on the application?
Yeah, it, in all caps, it says optional but recommended.
Okay. Well, we might, as we've been pretty consistent with that, we might need to look at the, the language on the application, but, Mr. Lodge?
Barry Lodge, Public Works. So we do want to, on this, on this particular case, we want to require that survey. This is kind of final steps. My understanding on this one, that this item will not go to district court for the final vacation enclosure, and so this is our, this is our only chance to be able to see that before it's done. Once this goes through this body and then through city council, it is, it's done. Normally, there's a third step on the closure and vacations, when it will go to district court, where we have that last chance that we can look at that and be sure that we're not missing something on it, but in, on this particular case, we do not have that. And so we want to, we want to stand firm on that requirement, that that topographic survey showing anything that's in there be provided.
Okay.
On, to be clear, topographic survey, what are you talking about? Alta survey or just a?
It does not have to be a full Alta survey that conforms to those requirements. We're looking mainly for evidence of any underground utilities. That's our primary concern with it. We're not looking at, at the actual boundary or anything like that. It's going to be primarily concerned with underground utilities that may have been constructed in that, in that area.
So, yeah, required locate and a survey of those locations?
Yes.
So we did submit an Alta survey with the abandoned sanitary sewer that runs through the alley, along with our application. So, I mean, the infrastructure is there on the Alta that's submitted. I have a copy right here. I mean, it's infrastructure owned by the city that's been abandoned, so.
That may be acceptable for?
If all, if all of that's in there and the, and the utilities have been located, then, yeah, we can review that, and that will be acceptable. There won't need to be an additional survey provided if there's one that's done, and I haven't seen that, so that's why we'll make that requirement.
I don't believe an Alta is a topographic survey, though, so it will be.
No, and that's why I always clear up what topographic survey means.
Right, it's not topo.
No, it's not a topo survey, and there's no design element, and there's no elevations or contours or anything like that involved. It's just location of.
We wouldn't necessarily have to have elevations, contours on it. It's going to be a little bit of difference in the, in the Alta surveys and topographic surveys, and when we get into, we're just looking for utilities that have been located. So if they've done that, then that'll satisfy the requirement.
Okay, so it sounds to me like the language in the technical evaluation remains. We're just looking for a motion.
With that, Mr. Chair, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to approve CE 1133 with TE number one.
We have a motion to recommend city council approval of item CE 1133, subject to the technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. And that item passes. Thank you. Item nine.
Item nine is case SPUD 1688, application to rezone 11403 East Britton Road from R1 and AE2, SPUD 1688 and AE2.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an SPUD that would allow for a vet clinic on East Britton Road, and it's so far east that you can see on the map that the town of Jones is right there. So there is one TE that we agree to. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Pennington, this is Ward seven.
Thank you. I've met with the applicant. I'm in support, unless there are some objections from our neighbors.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
If there's no questions from commissioners?
If there's no questions from commissioners, I'm happy to make the motion to recommend approval of SPUD 1688 to city council.
A motion from Commissioner Pennington to recommend the item to city council. This has been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. That item is approved. Item 10.
This is case SPUD 1692, application to rezone 501 Northwest 87th Street from R1.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an SPD that would allow for, to duplexes to be located on site. There are no TEs, and staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Powers, this is Ward two.
This is a really pretty straightforward application, and I, is there anybody signed up to speak on it?
I do not have anyone signed up.
I don't really have anything to add to it. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have anything to it, really. If anybody has any comments or questions, or if not, then I will move approval. Item number 10 is where we are, is that right? Yes, SPUD 1692.
A motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend approval to city council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. It is approved. Item 11.
This is SPUD 1693, application to rezone 625 Northwest 87th Street from R1.
And, you know, there's sort of mirror images. This is pretty straightforward as well. Is there anyone who's signed up to speak on this?
No.
So I would, if there are no comments or questions from the other commissioners?
We just need to get the applicant's name and address.
Hello, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive.
I'll move approval. Item number 11, SPUD 1693.
A motion to recommend approval from Commissioner Powers. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. All right. That item is approved. Item 12.
This is SPOD 1691, application to rezone 4608 Northwestern Avenue from PUD 685.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicants who are also here with us. This is a bit of a unique case in that the PUD that the site is currently under allows only for the uses necessary to conduct an automotive body repair shop. If you're familiar with this stretch of Western Avenue, it would seem out of place to have an auto body shop in this location. For whatever reason, the PUD, when it was approved all those years ago, limits it to just those three uses. My clients are buying the building and desire to make something of it, but need more flexibility than just an automotive body repair shop. So we did, I believe we continued it once, maybe not, but we became aware that there was protest, and so we were able to have a neighborhood meeting last week. Commissioner Powers was able to join. We walked through the SPOD as to why we're doing it, what we seek to do. There were some suggested changes to be made to that. I think all of the changes that we were asked to make, we did make. We sent that back to the neighbors. We did get one email back from an individual that's here, saying that based upon those changes, he had no further objection. The rest of the group was on that email chain. I didn't hear anything back. In discussions with Commissioner Powers, there were a few other items that she requested that my client can agree to. There is one TE that we agreed to, and then we would ask to add the following TEs. Limit the max height to two-story. Require angled parking along Western, subject to Public Works approving it, and no concrete work being required. In other words, we will stripe it, assuming that Public Works would allow it, based upon where the right-of-way line exists. Two trees shall be added to the corner along Western and 45th as part of our landscaping, and the bright blue wall that exists on the south side of the building will be painted some sort of subdued color. Our goal long-term is to have a mural there, but until we know what that mural would look like, and we go through the Arts Commission process, apparently Mr. Bowman, the former councilperson, till his last days, was very concerned about the blue wall. So Janice, carrying that torch for Sam, we're going to paint that wall and get rid of the bright blue color that exists there. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
The mural will be lovely when it's done. I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think this is one of those MDSs where we talk about signage, like what's there is allowed. If it's redeveloped, it'll be whatever's required. Can we just stick with what's there is allowed and not do that? Because I was astonished, after all the travails of the sign ordinance amendments, to drive down Western Avenue and see the HTO sign, which is fully MD and pole sign and all that. So don't want any more of those.
So all we're saying is that the TE1 says that freestanding signs shall be in accordance with the base zoning district. I don't know that we're legally allowed to do anything other than that at this point. The new sign code contemplates legally nonconforming, and there's a process to go deal with that. But freestanding accessory signs, Western Avenue is considered a main street under the comp plan. For reasons that are unknown to me, the sign code tacks back to the comp plan to look at the street typology, to give you your height and square footage. So we're limited in that Western Avenue's classification under the comp plan is that of a main street. So what we agree to in the TE is just that we have to meet the sign code. What we view the sign code requires is like 45 square feet and eight feet in height.
Is that, is Sarah here? I can't see Sarah.
Now, of course, the sign code is the most complicated bit of legislation perhaps to ever come out of City Council, so who knows what it actually says, but that's our best guess.
It was all done just to make it simple and easy to use, and anybody can read it.
Presumably Stephen didn't look at it, that's why.
I'm not crazy about the, you know, we'll comply with the zoning code, with this sign code, because I have real concerns about what the sign code might say.
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. So you can be more restrictive, but we, how big is your, how big is the sign currently on Western?
The pole?
The pole sign.
I don't know.
Is it more than 45 square feet?
15 feet. There's no actual sign. The pole is there.
The sign face is empty, is gone, but it's, I don't know, is it even like five by four or something? I mean, it's not big.
So for a C3 sign, the, so, hold on one second.
Got to leave breadcrumbs as you search the sign code.
Not for you, for her.
Okay. So assuming that the site is Zone C3 and that Western is a main street, the maximum height of a new sign would be eight feet, and the maximum size would be 45 square feet. So if the sign is currently bigger or taller than that, we think the use of a spud to lock it in would not be the proper use of a spud.
Oh.
We're not doing that.
You're okay with that?
Well, yeah. I mean, the TE.
Okay, 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 okay. Great. What else?
That's all I've got.
Okay. I think we hit everything else that was on my list. I probably should do, I bring my list with me, and I do have it here somewhere. But I think we went through them, so is there anyone else signed up to speak? Nobody at all?
No.
Oh, David, there was one other thing. What did we decide about the dumpster? Where's it going to end up? In the space on the north side?
We're concerned that that may be part of an alley, so what we propose is to keep it as-is. If we can make that work, we'll try, but what we require now is better than what has historically been there, so it has that 25-foot language. You can't do 50 here because of the depth of the site. It puts it closer to Western Avenue. So the way it's strapped in the spud is as good as we can get.
Yeah, it's a difficult site, frankly, so I'm going to let that lay, I think. And if there's no other comments, questions, or concerns from the commission, I'm going to move approval of item 12, SPOD 1691.
Is that subject to the new technical evaluations, and are we squared away on those?
Absolutely, yes. You want to read them out loud again?
Sure. Max height, two-story, angled parking, subject to Public Works approval, and nothing more than striping being required, two trees added to the landscaped area, and we will paint the blue wall.
Do we need to specify the color?
No. We will not agree to a color.
No, because it's going to be a mural eventually.
Hi, Sarah Welch again, Planning Department. So regarding the painting, I'm worried that the MDS will been locked in to paint the wall. Does that have to be in the zoning? Because it'll be subdued until it becomes a mural. Is it okay to just, do you know? I just, I don't want a mural to be denied because the MDS will say the blue wall shall be painted.
It can be painted until such time that a mural is approved.
Okay. And then on the angled parking, does it mean the curbs will be closed on Western? Is that what we're saying?
No, we're saying we're not touching anything but striping.
You've just got that one driveway that stretches not only in front of this, but the building next to it, and it's just flat and open. But I think there's room for angled parking and still for there to be a little bit of, even like a patio sidewalk on the other side of it.
Okay.
They've got all these, whatever those bumper things, I call them curbs, but that's not what they are.
Little concrete blocks.
Curbs.
Yeah, those concrete bumper things. Rather than having to actually construct a real curb.
On Western?
On Western.
Okay.
We may use blue paint for the striping.
So, and for what it's worth, I did check with Commissioner Littlefield, and he thought that the angled parking would work along there, so we'll see. We'll see how that goes. So I made my motion. Did I?
Yes. We have a motion from Commissioner Powers, subject to the technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And that item is recommended for approval. Item 13.
Item 13 is SPOD 1682, application to rezone 3420 North May Avenue from C3.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Rob Elliott, 900 Northwest 6th Street, representing the property owner on amending this zoning.
Do you have anything you want to tell us about the project?
Well, the client has a dispensary operation at this location, and part of his dispensary a couple of years ago was approved for processing in the location. And since that time, it was determined that his processing operation was not in conformance with zoning. So this application is to make the zoning compatible with the processing application or operation. He plans no improvements to the property other than allowing the zoning to be compatible with his business. And then the PUD, spud application, has stipulations for the property if any further improvements were made in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Powers, this is your ward.
Yes, this, Sarah was willing to meet me on the site. We took a tour of this site. I was a little confused about what exactly they were asking for and what was necessary and so forth, but going to look at it was very helpful. The portion of the property that has to do with any kind of hazardous materials, that is part of what they need for their processing part of it, it's all contained. It's inside the building, and beyond that, it's inside a kind of like storm shelter, for lack of a better term. It's like inside a unit that's contained. So between it, my concern then became about the neighbors next door to the east residential there. They've got a good, wide, open space, and they also have some little outdoor units that will act as buffers, both if there would be sound, but also, God forbid, if there was ever any kind of an issue with the hazardous materials or whatever, it's between them and it. So that really assuaged my concerns. The use itself is long established at this area, at this location, and I don't have any problem or issue with that. Is there anybody that's signed up to speak?
I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
I have not heard from anybody either. I mean, not anybody has contacted me with respect to this, so if that is the case, then I will move to approve.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, sure, of course.
So we are confident that there is no smell, or we're confident in the quality of the ventilation as far as the impact?
That's why I had Sarah join me, because she knows I don't have a sense of smell.
Okay.
I'd like to speak to that.
We're good with this, right? This feels like one of those moments where I'm going to vote yes, and then a few months from now, there's a crowd of people in this?
Because it is so long established at the location, and the neighbors are on the east side, so, you know, prevailing wind's being southerly or whatever. I mean, I don't know that there is any smell, at least outside of the building. Sarah said it was quite strong inside the building, but, you know, I think, do you want to speak to this?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I mean, Rob can help us the most, but I think that the scent is contained inside the walls of the building, for the most part.
Well, there, yes, there's a number, you know, there's a lot of equipment involved. Part of it's ventilation, part of it is exhaust. I would hate to say that, you know, no exhaust fumes would leave the building, that I don't know just what they would, what they would necessarily smell like.
Okay. Okay. I'm good.
Do we know it's stored in those outbuildings? Do we know it is stored in those outbuildings, the ones further to the east?
Primarily their marketing products, packaging containers.
So no product?
There's no operation, and it's all storage.
And I mean, I think if smell were an issue, there'd be people here talking about it, so. You're in agreement with the TE?
Sure.
Okay. Once again, if that's it, well, I'm going to move approval for item number 13, SPOD 1682.
A motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend the item to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. That item is recommended for approval. Thank you. Item 14.
I'd like to thank Mr. Elliott for his patience. As we were dealing with this, it kind of went back and forth a couple of times. It's based on my schedule and getting it arranged, but it was an interesting tour.
Item 14 is case PC 10952, application to rezone 1201 Southeast 25th Street from PUD 855.
Brent Irish, 1605 Mark Circle.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What can you tell us about your project?
All right. So this is a tiny sliver of land behind an I-2 property, and then the adjacent properties on both sides of my I-2 property are also I-2, but they butt up against I-1 or R1. And I acquired this property three years ago, the I-2 portion, and this PUD 855 was a triangle-shaped piece of property that had been used as, for yard space for I-2. It was leased from Tyler Media, that's a tower PUD there, so it was just a vacant piece of that land that they had split off and fenced and then leased to the tenant that was at the I-2 property that I purchased. So there had been no complaints ever that I'm aware of, and it was just brought to my attention by a partner that, okay, hey, this is still part of PUD 855, and it'd be cleaner if that was, if this was all the same zoning. So, because we just acquired, we acquired that little sliver of a triangle-shaped property, that yard space about a year and a half after we purchased the I-2 property. So I'm just asking that we skip the recommendation of having to do a PUD, which is a lot more expensive for this little piece of property, and go to I-2 since there's?
I understand that request, but there's certain things, when it abuts residential, that are not compatible in I-2, or they're not compatible with residential. So the spud allows us to put some extra enhancements in place to help protect those residential lots, so that's the reason for that recommendation. So Commissioner Privet, this is your ward. Do you have any comments?
I'm just going to say, we typically don't grant straight zoning next to R1, so, I mean, it's kind of a nonstarter for most of us up here, unfortunately. I don't know if there's any other way besides a PUD to do that, but that's how I feel about it. I'm not in favor, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Has property been vacant? As it shows here, it appears to be.
Yeah, it's, well, it's mostly vacant.
Yeah, there are just so many things it could be if it were straight I-2, that are just not going to be compatible with that residential next door. So I think you want to do an SPOD, and we'll go easy on you if we can.
So with that, do you want, would you like a continuance, or you would like just an up-and-down vote today? Because I would recommend to deny it if I was to make the motion, if it was to approve it. But for continuance and a PUD and getting the protections in place, it'd be probably the best.
I think it's an up-and-down vote. I would think that, since it's been used for all these years, for as long as anybody at the, like, the previous tenant was there for over 30 years. And if nobody shows up, if nobody has any issues at a City Council meeting, maybe the?
All right. Well, we'll take it.
Give it some grace.
Well, before you, before you agree to that, that means it's going to go on the council's agenda with the recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission. That, do they even have the full, like, hearing and allow, you know, at that point? It sounds risky, so I just think you should be aware.
They will have it, I mean, they will have it on their agenda, invite people to speak or not.
So financially, it's more of a risk? So financially, it's more of a risk. If you take a continuance, you get to keep that money that you've paid on this application and move it forward, right, to a PUD?
Convert it.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to protect you from.
I appreciate that. The quote I had in the PUD was for 10 times what this application fee is, so--
Our fee is not 10 times.
I'll give you my card.
I need to get somebody else to do the PUD then.
I'd have to excuse myself.
It's SPD, right?
SPD.
It's not, yeah.
No, it's an SPD.
That'd be easy.
Yeah.
You might, you sure you don't want to talk to staff about this until, before we make a decision? Maybe to understand the process fully, to understand whether you could do it yourself?
That's right. You're not under a time--
Okay. I'll defer. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
You might thank us later for this.
To January 9, 23rd, February 13th, or?
Okay, sounds good.
Which one?
Yeah, next one, January 9.
January 9, okay.
Our recommendation is February 13th, because they'll have to refile, pay, create a master design statement, we'll have to publicly notice. So it does delay until February.
If you're not under time constraint, do that.
Well, he was good with all three, so. I'll move, continue this case to February 13th.
I have a motion from Commissioner Privet to continue the item to February 13th. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your vote. That item is heard. Item 15.
15 is deferred as well.
15 is deferred?
Yes.
Okay.
Item 16.
I did have a couple people signed up for item 15, so, but we did defer that in the beginning, so just wanted to make that note. That item will be heard on?
January 9.
January 9. So item 16. Item 16 is SPD 1680, application to rezone 1321 North Meridian Avenue from SPD 108, R-4, and UC to SPD 1680 and Urban Conservation.
Rob Elliott, 900 North West 6th Street again. This client has a property that he would like to open a dispensary and is seeking to SPUD rezoning because the existing SPUD allows only a florist shop. The existing SPUD, apparently in the early 90s, was granted for just, even though being in C-1 District, only allows a convenience sales and personal services, further limited to a florist gift shop, where arrangements are created for delivery and sales on premises. As a result of the application for a remodeling, change-of-use permit, it was denied because of the existing SPUD zoning. So he is requesting that commercial, this, the same neighborhood commercial zoning be intact, but would allow his dispensary operation. I understand that there's been some protests filed, and that the owner has reached out to some of the protestants, had conversation. But seemingly, the dispensary use is the main argument. There's no remodeling exterior, other improvements at question for this proposed PUD right now.
Commissioner Meek, this is Ward 3. You want to lead our discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
I do have four signed up to speak.
Okay. I did a little research on this after reading the protest, and I understand most of the concerns, and I do want to hear from them. But I understand most of the concerns are from the church that's nearby. And I do believe our legislature looked at requiring dispensaries to not be so close, but they never passed it. So it's only for schools. But still, look forward to hearing from them.
You ready to hear from?
Yes, sir.
All right, Harry Black.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Wow, on this side of the microphone, it gets loud. I appreciate your attention and you giving us the opportunity to address this. My name is Harry Black. I live in the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association and am a member of the board for Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association, and also a board member for the Windsor Area Business District. Also, in addition, am friends, have had a longstanding relationship with Iglesias Bautista Rio de Agua Viva. We're not members there, but in my previous job, I'm retired now, but in my previous job, had opportunity to work with that church a few times, and am friends with the current pastor who is here to speak, as well as one of the four letters that I think has been presented. We want to be careful not to overlap and abuse your time or attention. Commissioner Pennington, a few moments ago, said, if this feels like one of those issues, and I'm not, I'm not gonna abuse you, man, but he said, it feels like one of those issues where I'm gonna vote yes, and then, well, and then we departed, you and me. But I thought he was gonna say, and then later on, we'll regret it. What he said is, and then a few months later, we'll have a room full of people. I think this could be one of those issues where you approve, if you chose to approve it, then it might be one of those things that you ultimately will regret. In making sure that I don't overlap the comments of others, I will simply say, I have lived in areas of Arkansas where I was in a dry county. For those of you that not familiar, might not be familiar with that language, that meant there was, were no alcoholic beverages, no sales or purchasing ability in those, in that county. What I observed, having been in that situation twice, was the vote came again and again and again, until those who were opposed were finally worn down. The deep pockets of those who had the opportunity to profit from there being places of alcoholic beverage in that county would finally be able to wear down those who were opposed. And so at first, it would be a package store. So it would be liquor stores sporadically. Then ultimately, the votes would start again. And then there would be passage for alcohol by single drinks. And so that would open bars and institutions like that, all legal, of course. And then ultimately, in the grocery stores, in the convenience stores and other grocery stores, it would be made legal. I think what is, what I see as a genuine potential for the state of Oklahoma, although the voters have rejected recreational marijuana once, that's going, that wasn't the last time. Everybody didn't say, oh, well, that dispensary that we put in, that we invested all that money for it to be recreational, it didn't work out, so we'll just take our, take our industry and go somewhere else. I'm not the only one. I was reluctant about presenting it from this perspective, but I've heard others say, it appears, or we think. So that emboldened me to say to you that, yes, what we're talking about now is a medical marijuana dispensary, but how long until it, if you approve it, how long until it is a recreational marijuana for anybody legal, of legal age and ability? It is a recreational. It's no longer a pharmacy for medical purposes. It is a recreational, sort of a liquor-by-the-drink. So we are opposed, because this is a church. We, some of us were under the misunderstanding that there was already a law on the books for 1,000 feet from a church. That information actually came from, at least I found it, on rcanabisclinik.com, which said, claimed to serve Arkansas and 20 other states. It definitively stated that. Then I started trying to get into the Oklahoma Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Authority, the paperwork there. And I'll just tell you, I have a master's degree, a doctorate of ministry degree, so it's not the kind that tells you what to do with a cold, but it is a doctorate. And I just couldn't navigate it. I kept having more questions than I had answers working through that. So we, there were letters sent to you protesting it on the 1,000, on the 1,000-feet space. And by the way, the distance between a church building and this facility is less than 100 feet. The other thing that I will say, and then I'll leave it to the others, Google Drive, Google Maps, there are 16 other, at least 16 other medical marijuana dispensaries, less than two miles from the location where they intend to put this dispensary. 16! And you can go a little further. A reason that is quoted in the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority materials is that a thing like what you're talking about, an action like what you're talking about, can be done if there is a need to provide that service for the clients there. With 16, there are medical marijuana dispensaries at 23rd and MacArthur, 23rd and Meridian, 23rd and Portland, 10th and MacArthur, 10th and just west, just east of Shawnee, so between Meridian and Portland. There are an abundance of outlets for medical marijuana for the people who live in this neighborhood. Because of that, I urge you, please don't be a Mr., like a Mr. Pennington. Not even from my area. Please, okay, please, skip that. Take that back. Please do not put yourself in a situation where six months from now, a year from now, a year and a half from now, you will drive down Meridian, drive past Iglesias Bautista Rio de Agua Viva, and say, I wish we hadn't have put that medical, that recreational medical marijuana, that medical marijuana location next to that poor Baptist church. Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Any questions for Mr. Black? All right. That's okay. No, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
Not offended, but I might vote your way. Don't rule that out. Mr. Chair, before you go to the next, can I get clarification from the Commissioner and the staff? The current zoning, could it, it is, it could be residential, or maybe it is, could it be a single-family residence or a small apartment?
Reserve the right to being needed for residential.
Yeah, it looks like it's being currently used as some kind of small business.
I see that, but it's called SPUD 108, R-4 General Residential.
Right.
And UC Urban Conservation Overlay District. I'm confused what it is currently. I'd like to know if it could be housing, either single-family or multifamily, currently as zoned.
Sarah? Neighborhood Business District uses.
Can't go from memory. Hold on one second.
Not a staff member, but as I think that it was reported to us in our application for a remodel, for change-of-use permit, it's currently SPUD 108. The text, as I've said before, only a floor shop. That's sort of what we were led to.
That's what I was told. Floor shop only was the only use in SPUD 108.
And so I guess I'm wondering why it's called R-4 General Residential.
Right. The base, probably.
It was, it was a residence at one time, it appears.
Looks the way that it's written, though, that there's two parcels here. There's, it's like the line splits the building on their site plan, or on the overall plan. So there's SPUD, S-P-U-D 108, and there's a portion of R-4, which is just a weird something that didn't get cleaned up previously.
There's an accessory dwelling, it looks like, on the edge of it, that was added on. Different brick color.
But I don't, I guess what, if S-P-U-D 108--
Yeah.
In response to Commissioner Forrester's question, S-P-U-D 108 would not allow the residential. So the R-4 portion of the site, perhaps you could, but if it's limited to community commercial and flower shop, then that would not allow--
Hatched.
Yeah. Looks like it's not at all.
And that's not, right, right. Well, not to get too far ahead of myself, but if it cannot be a residence, then I, I'll save it till later. But when it was limited to a floral shop, that might have been an okay transition, but, or if it could still be residence, maybe we need more housing still. Oh, anyway, I hope to get clarification before I was listening to the next ones, but if you want to go ahead and go to the next ones.
Okay. Ms. Robin Jones?
I'll be brief, and if I start coughing, I'll be done. So I'm the Director of the West Ten and Windsor Districts, which is West Oklahoma City of where this property is. And although there was one email communication telling us of the delay of the hearing, there was no engagement with, with any of these people who are presenting in terms of discussion about this issue. And so my, my stand is just, overall, this is a community that has all kinds of issues trying to move forward, and just in general, a high overview. We would prefer, as a community, to just have not one more dispensary, especially in a major, in a major place. Thank you. Any questions?
No. Thank you. All right. Raoul Barrios Lopez.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, like he said, my name is Raoul Barrios Lopez. I live at 518 Northwest 16th Street, less than a one-minute drive. So, I also grew up at this church. I was born and raised, so I know a lot about the community that's there. I was also in all of the youth programs that was offered at this church. So even though that I'm graduated, I'm in college now, I can, I would like to speak on behalf of them, because I know how they are. And my main concern is, like Commissioner, Commissioner Meek has mentioned, this is like, almost compared to a school, because a lot of the youth in, that are minors, that are still in grade school, come here as well. And with the establishment of a dispensary right next door, it would like increase their curiosity and temptation, and they want them to try it in the future. So that's a main concern that I have for the young kids that are, that attend our church, especially in the summer, because we get a lot of traffic in the summer. And we specifically split up the parking lots, too. We have activities throughout the year. We have activities that are just in the south side or the west side. And if there's people just on the south side, they'd clearly be able to see that establishment of the dispensary. And another thing is safety and security. We've been broken into, I think, three times, at least that I know of. So inadvertently, the establishment of a dispensary can increase the violence, so to speak. Not that it has caused any at the moment, but we have been broken into multiple times, had equipment stolen, and once in the youth room. So that's all I have to say. Any questions?
All right. Well, thank you for coming down.
Yep, thank you.
And then, lastly, I have Pastor Hiro Kimono.
Good afternoon, and member of this commission, fellow citizen and friend. Before I continue, may I ask Raoul to come over and be my translator if I need it?
Certainly.
My name is Hiro Kimono, pastor of Rio de Agua Viva Baptist Church, located at 1421 North Meridian Avenue, just next door than north side where this new dispenser is trying to be established. There are only 100 feet distance from one building to the other. We are a congregation with a membership of about 200 people. 200 people that lives in our neighborhood, most of them lives no more than 10 minutes from our church. People that seek the benefit of the community. So in representation of these 200-- So in representation of these 200 people that, is that I am standing today in complete opposition to the establishment of this dispensary. Before presenting my reason, we believe that law, we believe that law and order are necessary for the benefit of our community. We respect your work because God also established in his work, let every person submit to higher authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been established by God. This principle have also encouraged us to collaborate with you guys, with the city, for more than 12 years in the use of our facility as a voting pool, as a voting pool. We oppose because a dispensary is too close, that it will encourage kids and young people to consume it again. I know we are not a school, neither I'm requesting to make or be treated like a school, but this dispensary is, it will be just too close, 100 feet from building to building. It will be next door. Our kids could see it from maybe the windows of their classroom. Not mention, without mention that they also used to play at the backyard of the church. I think that is too close from not having an impact, any impact of in our kids and young people. Even when we are not a school, we do have many preventive education program for our kids against this substance. Every Wednesday, we have a program called Awana Club, where an average of 90 children and young people attendance. They also meet on Sunday morning, and most of them on the, on Sunday evening.
The other side.
An establishment like this would impact our mission to help future regeneration stay away from this type of staff. Having marijuana is just next door, would send another message to our kids and encourage them to consume it. We oppose, secondly, because dispensary will encourage addicted people in the process of changing their life to return to the same habit. We try to serve the community through education or corrective help for those people looking to stay away or looking for a way out of this type of addiction. With a facility 100 feet away, I don't think the city would be cooperating with the benefit of those people and our community. Even when they don't have this purpose of dispensary, other place will be a temptation for these people trying to get away from this addiction. Thirdly, we oppose this because it could encourage the increase of homeless and security in our area. As Raoul said, we believe that this type of business will also attract more homeless because we have many, and criminal people to our environment. We have had cases where some of them have entered to the church, broken to the church, and even stolen a part of the AC unit. This year, we had losses from more than $8,000 due to the activity of these people in the area. That's why we are concerned about. And finally, if we leave this, if we leave this place, from this place, from this building, wrap it up, and in our vehicles, we will not feel the cold outside. That's true. But that doesn't mean that temperatures are not low, or that other people are suffering for that. We, we going to believe that our community will not be frozen by the cold of the drug addiction, that in many cases marijuana is its gateway. We will look to other way, to other side, while the medicinal use of marijuana is actually consumed in our society? Do we really think that we, this cold of marijuana addiction will not reach us? According to Oklahoma State Board of Pharmacy, in 2017, there were 1,855 pharmacies. We currently have 80 CVS pharmacies in Oklahoma. How many dispensary? According to my research.
30 seconds remaining.
Excuse me?
30 seconds remaining.
Okay, I'm about to finish. How many dispensary? More than 2,000. A very high number in just six years. Let keep in mind that in Oklahoma, it easy to get a medical marijuana car. About 10% of adult people have one. Consider what I say, and my God give you understanding. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Any question?
No? All right. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that's everyone I had signed up to speak.
Okay. I do have a question. And this is just for staff, based, in looking at the, I'll look at our municipal counselor. Are there any, any issues in the statute around medical marijuana that give us any kind of prescription for our analysis when it comes to approving the zoning? Is there any kind of limitation or any thought process that we need to go through because of this? I know the statute was broad, so.
Broad is my understanding. I would agree. Generally, I don't recall that, granted, this is from looking at it years and years ago. I don't think it's like alcohol. I don't think there's a similar prohibition with churches. So I think everybody's not finding of that prohibition. It's because it doesn't exist. Have I looked at the marijuana statute specifically for purposes of this zoning application? No, so I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if there's something in the statute that says, well, you're supposed to analyze it this way when it comes to zoning, that we were, we knew that.
And I'm, I don't know one way or the other on that. I'm sorry.
I, I want to say that it has always been my understanding, and the way we've kind of dealt with these in the past, is that the whole point and purpose of the legislation when it was actually adopted, you know, by referent, by initiative petition, wasn't it? So, was that for the law not to make a distinction between this type of retail use and other retail uses. And that was very purposeful, so that it, you know, could not be separated out and excluded in, in a location that was determined to be appropriate for retail use. So in, in terms of, you know, the prohibitions, other than those that are very specific with respect to locations, your schools, et cetera, you know, I, I think that not only aren't there any, there aren't any for a specific intentional reason, I would say. So, you know, these kinds of applications are always somewhat problematic. I think when, when medical marijuana became a thing in Oklahoma, there was a lot of concern about issues surrounding crime and just, you know, all kinds of things. And the proliferation of them has certainly been a sight to behold, you know, as the, as it has burst into the state, and then a very slow, it seems to be, weeding process of businesses going out of business because there are too many of them and that kind of thing. And I think that's still going on and probably will continue for a while. Whether we ever get recreational marijuana in this state or not, I don't know. Some states that have it require the dispensaries to be separate from the recreational facilities. And, you know, they, they regulate it all differently and everything, so who knows what will happen with that? But I have to say, other than concerns, and I do not dismiss them at all, and some very, you know, closely held concerns that people have about the use itself of marijuana and the availability of it, and I don't have complaints in, people will come up to me at cocktail parties, or, you know, at church on Sunday, or, you know, whatever, and complain to me about dispensaries. I do not think that as a rule, they have been the, the bane on our existence, that a lot of people were concerned that they would be. And other than the same concerns that you have about other retail uses, traffic and noise and hours of operation and, you know, that kind of thing, next to residential and that, that kind of impact that they have on surrounding uses, they're pretty much like other retail uses from what I have observed of them, so.
I've got two thoughts on this. And I talked with Mr. Elliott yesterday, and like I said, I did a little bit of the research on the legislature not including churches like they did schools. One of my thoughts is, is that I think it's unfortunate because I think a church does have Sunday school. I think that children are there, and I believe a church has the right to, if they wanted to spin up a program for a Mother's Day out, or a daycare, or a pre-K, that that would instantly be in violation with this dispensary next door. And so that's a concern. On the complete 180 other direction of this, they also could have brought this application, and it's under Neighborhood Business District Uses, which is just a re, which allows retail, and they didn't have to say a word about a dispensary, but they did. So I'm very, I'm looking for some guidance on this. When I first saw it and got my packet and read it, I was, oh heck no. I looked at, you know, I drive by this, this is my ward, I know the area, I Google Earthed it real quick, and I'm looking at a parking lot 10 feet away from the, this house. That's a church parking lot. And I didn't like it. But also, I didn't understand how the, and I had to ask staff today about the Neighborhood Business District being the uses, because I wanted to look at all the use groups that's allowed. Well, it's a package deal, you know, and retail's in it, and this is just another retail. So thoughts, Commissioners?
I have, I had a couple of thoughts, but, and it really goes down to the retail use as, you know, I have nothing against dispensaries, and I'm not singling that use out, although I certainly appreciate the proximity and the points that have been raised. My concern was, when Spud, S-P-U-D 108 was done, there was a very clear intent to limit that use, to restrict it to that single florist use. I don't know the history on this, I haven't read back that far, but that, that raised a flag for me of, there was, there was a reason for doing that. There are major retail centers at 10th, at 23rd. This is a mid-block location. It's prox, you know, close proximity to other residential as well. Is it appropriate for retail? I mean, it, it's an old house that's been converted to a business. It needs work, presumably it's, it appears to be empty presently. It's not, it's not, there's no current business being used there. So someone's going to need to spend some money to fix this up, to get any form of retail there. And maybe we should be considering whether that's, is that, is that a need in this, this section of this community? So that's, that's kind of where I, where I am. I'm not sure I feel that this is just a straightforward, you know, no, retail.
If I may too, same thing as Commissioner Govine. Up here at 13th Street, it's not appropriate for any retail, other than apparently a good decision to limit it to floral. It's surrounded by residences and a church. That is why if it switched from residence to a floral, that I believe it was so limited. I do not think it should be expanded beyond floral. I think it's completely inappropriate at this location. And this has nothing to do with the medical marijuana. I wouldn't want a fast food with a speaker. I wouldn't want a cigarette, a tobacco cigarette dispenser there in a convenience store. I wouldn't want a nightclub there. Has nothing to do with the medical marijuana. This is not appropriate location for anything other than residence or the limited floral use that was wisely approved.
Agree, and I'll add that when we were faced with a similar question in Ward 7 on northeast 20, northeast 63rd Street, converting a home, you might recall this, Janice, this is several years ago, but we, similarly, we objected. Mid-block, close proximity to residential, it's just not an appropriate place for this kind of, of retail. So I do want to be clear with our friends, since I was specifically referenced for my statement. This is not an existing operation, which was the case before, in which there were no objections from the neighbors versus this location that's not at current operation. So want to be clear about that distinction.
Great point.
Yeah, I had the same feeling about, that you guys all did. It seemed like this should be more of a residential function and not a commercial function. I mean, essentially, it's the only thing that's surrounded by a sea of houses in this stretch of Meridian.
Yeah, I'm a hard no on it, I don't need to go anymore, so.
With what we've talked about, I think I'm ready to make a recommendation. If you guys got anything else?
Okay. I'd like to recommend denial of S-P-U-D 1680.
I have a motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend denial. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Recall, where this is backward, it's a vote for denial, so a yes vote is a vote to deny. That item is unanimous, denied. Item 17.
This is S-P-U-D 1689, application to rezone 19,001 Southeast 59th Street from AA to S-P-U-D 1689.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The S-P-U-D before you is for Dobson Communications. It would allow the outdoor storage of fiber and other materials. I shared on Zoom with most of you the, an image. It's been in operation for, for some time. This is an effort to, to get it legal. Jerry, if you go to the, you can see on the aerial, we have significant tree cover both to the north and to the west. Our intention is to leave that so that it provides some natural screening. There are four TEs that I'd like to discuss. TE 1, we are agreeable to that if we can strike the automotive and equipment storage and the wholesaling, storage, and distribution use units. We're fine with the deletion of the others. TE 2, staff has asked us to amend the MDS to provide more detail about the screening. So what we propose is the typical language, that being, no less than a six, eight, six foot and no greater than an eight-foot-high wall or fence shall be required to screen any outdoor storage within this pud. Said wall or fence shall be constructed entirely of stucco, brick, or stone on a continuous footing, or may be constructed of wood and shall be solid and opaque. We agree with TE 3. TE 4, we would ask to strike that TE as, I believe, is staff's position that sidewalks aren't required based upon where we are and, and what our uses are. And then add a TE 5 to state, outdoor storage shall be permitted within this pud, excuse me, spud, provided it is located behind the front building line and screened from the west and north property lines.
Guess this one's mine. This one's kind of strange with the large non-conforming use I was surprised of. Do we have anybody signed up to speak? I would assume we do, but.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
And as far as the uses that you were wanting or willing to strike, David, gasoline sales wasn't one of them, right?
Say it, say it again.
Gasoline sales, large.
Yeah, that's one of the ones. So what we're agreeing to strike is eating establishments, fast food with drive-through, and gasoline sales large.
Okay, well, that helps. All right.
And then I, I wanted some clarification on, you wanted to strike TE 4 where it says sidewalks, if required, shall be constructed in accordance.
Sarah, are sidewalks requ, I mean, there's, we're, we're a bit confused as to whether or not they are required or not. I mean, there are no sidewalks for miles and miles and miles in this area.
And your amendment to 2 was the walls all the way around?
The standard language, the no less than a six, no greater than an eight.
Oh, the six-foot.
I can read it again if you'd like, but it's the standard.
No, okay, that's fine.
Sarah, did you, the sidewalk issue?
The sidewalk TE is from Public Works. I believe because the MDS currently states they are not required, and so, go ahead.
Yeah, very large, Public Works. The general requirement on sidewalks is along any arterial street for new construction. And so that's why that is put in there. I'm, I'm aware that there's no other sidewalks out there. I'm, I'm aware that there's no other sidewalks out there, but that's also a very poor reason to not start putting them in. Now, there's some other reasons, I think, that could justify the, a fee-in lieu sidewalk, but to just strike the requirement completely and say, we're not going to have to have any, when ordinances state that new construction along the arterial street, arterial streets will require the construction of sidewalks. We get into an area out here that we've got just a statutory right-of-way, we don't have any curb and gutter streets, there's some other, could, could be some overriding issues, but I don't want to see the, the TE taken out, because I would argue the flip side that ordinances do require sidewalks in this location.
But we're, we're happy to pay the fee-in lieu or even along 59th. What we're worried about is along Luther, because of the size of those trees, if we go in and have to pour foundations and pour sidewalks, we're likely to disturb trees and lose a significant portion of that, so.
I, I can be, I'd be on board with 59th Street.
Well, I would just say sidewalks, and if redeveloped.
Shall be required along 59th?
Shall be required along arterial.
Is Luther considered arterial?
I don't.
I think Luther is, it, it may, I think it's a section-lined road, so it's going to be, it is going to be classified as some level of arterial. It may be a rural arterial, maybe minor. It's not going to be a major arterial in this location, it's because of traffic counts. But the ordinance doesn't specify a distinction between the various kinds of arterial streets.
What if we say sidewalk along 59th and a fee-in lieu along Luther?
That's fine.
That'd be fine, because, because you never know.
We'd be taking out trees.
A bus route might come in on 59th, and you've got residential up there to the north. So I just want to make sure that we're covered somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say that that, that fee-in lieu application could be made, we'll review it. I don't see any problem with that at this point, but it will be something that will go through the Public Works' review.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to amend TE 4.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else have anything? I'm ready to make a motion in front. I'll move to approve SPUD 1689 with the TEs, let's see, amending TE 2 to state the, the standard requirements for screening. And sidewalks to TE 4, the fee-in lieu of along Luther Road, and sidewalks required along 59th.
We also had TE 1 to delete.
Delete which one?
Automotive and equipment storage and wholesale storage and distribution.
Okay, delete those two, and then TE 3 the way it is?
We also had.
Added TE 5 to say, outdoor storage shall be permitted within the PUD, provided it is located behind the front building line and screened from the west and the north property lines.
Okay. I'm good with that.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Privet to recommend approval to City Council, subject to the amended TEs. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item is recommended for approval. Item 18.
This is SPUD 1690, application to rezone 2421 South Portland Avenue from C3 and AE2 to SPUD 1690 and AE2.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an SPUD that would allow for limited commercial along Portland. There are four TEs, all of which we agree to.
Commissioner Meek, this is Ward 3.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have anyone signed up to speak regarding this?
I do not.
Have a look through this, spoke with applicant. I'm good with it, unless any other commissioners have any questions or concerns, I'm ready to make a motion.
I think we're ready for the motion.
Okay, all right. I'd like to recommend approval of SPUD 1690. With the TEs as listed.
The motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend approval of SPUD 1690, subject to the technical evaluations, that's been seconded by Commissioner Govine, please cast your votes. That item passes.
Thank you.
Item 19 has been continued. Item 20.
Item 20 is case PUD 2044, application to rezone 14501 North Rockwell from PUD 1300.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that would be for a, a product that, we really don't have provisions within the code that are adequate to describe this. So what we've had to do is place the multifamily use unit in there. Jared, if you could go to, so it's really a, a single-family type of development, but more likely than not, there'll be rentals on a single lot. And so because of that, it won't be platted, but single-family residential doesn't contemplate the ability to do that. Multifamily residential is the only use unit that gets us where we need to be. There's a significant amount of open space in this, as you can see, because we have what appears to be a blue line coming through it from the west to the east, and then also a portion of it that goes south. So all, we agree to all the TEs. TE 1 asks us to specify the density or maximum number of dwelling units. What we would propose is 240. That would put it at approximately 11 or 12 dwelling units an acre, which is significantly less than what you would expect to see in a multifamily project. Jared, if you could go back to the zoning map. Worth noting, if you look at what's around us in terms of compatibility, you have an apartment project to our east, an apartment project to the south, single-family residential to our north. What is not fully on screen, but what you see where it says office, that is PACOM. So I don't know if that, if you go to the aerial, Jared, it may, there you go. So you can see the kind of ongoing expansion to PACOM. So we are very close to one of the largest employers that we have in Northwest Oklahoma City. It's a, an area that is desirable for many, and so we would ask for your approval. Again, we agree to all TEs, and on TE 1, we would specify 240 units.
Commissioner Noble, would you like to start us off?
Did anyone sign up to speak on this?
I do have one, yes.
Let's hear for them.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Tom Kriakos, I'm with the Rockwell Village HOA, I'm the president. Our concern was that currently, right now, there is a, a traffic jam right north of that on 143rd, that because of PACOM, they have to have their own police officers manning from council all the way up until 150th, where Spring Creek Elementary is, going all the way to council, from morning, eight o'clock, and then in the evening, five. There's already a major traffic jam right now. Adding more homes is going to cause a congestion that is uncontrollable right now. It's already uncontrollable right now, it lasts hours. So our concern is, what, there's kids that hang out there for school. There are up-and-coming businesses, and until Rockwell Road expands to four lanes, it's going to cause more traffic and more congestion for all of these people that want to live there, and for these people that want to build the homes over there. And it's gonna, it's, it's, it's already a problem right now, if you drive through that area, you can see it coming off the turnpike, you can see it before, you're getting onto the turnpike. So my concern is, before you rezone it, is there anything to delay it until Rockwell Road is expanded into four lanes? That's all I'm concerned about. And so are the neighbors in that area and, and around that area. That's all I wanted to say.
All right.
Any questions?
No, I will just say, I mean, typically, what we see is, we know it from a common sense standpoint, it doesn't make sense that these new developments come in, and then you have to wait for the road to be expanded, but that's, that's the process that we have to work within here. So we, we don't hold off on these, you know, deny these developments until the road can be expanded. What we see, though, is the more rooftops that come into an area, it creates, you know, more of, of that need, and those, those projects begin to get prioritized, so.
I know there was plans for it to be built north of 150th, but then for some reason, they just left out this huge gap in between our community, the existing apartment complexes right there, and it just stops. And it's, it is, there's several accidents every month in that one area. I mean, just a year ago, somebody ran their car into the Rockwell Village apartment complexes sign. I mean, it's a dangerous area, and adding more homes here right now, I don't think it's a smart move.
I would also add, and I hope that the HOA has done this, but you know, we're in the midst, the city of Oklahoma City's in the midst of receiving feedback from the neighbors about the geo-bond projects. And so certainly, I hope you're out actively participating in that process and submitting Rockwell as one of the, the places to be targeted for getting the money to expand, because I think it, it is going to be essential for that area, and I, I hear you. I'd also wonder, and I know Commissioner Powers has mentioned this before, our work with the Traffic Commission, I honestly don't know what all of our tools are, because we really are just dealing with the land use, not as much with the, the traffic analysis. And so I think this is another example of why we should probably try to have some more formal conversations with them when we are reviewing these kinds of applications.
Wanted to point out that Rockwell is scheduled for a widening. I don't know if Barry has additional details, but it's supposed to start winter of 2025. So that section from 150th down to Memorial is scheduled for a widening. So that, that should help traffic there, and I believe that will cover the intersection there. Barry, is that accurate?
Very large, Public Works. Yes, that section of, of Rockwell, I believe, is, was part of the 2017 bond package, and so the plans are, are currently in development for that right now, that will improve the intersection at 150th and Rockwell. It will tie into the area south that's already been widened out, and then it'll, it proceeds a little bit north of the intersection, I think just before it gets to the, to the school entrance, is about where that ends. But that is, that is programmed, and, and the plans are in develop, in development right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you coming down.
And one other thing about this development is that there's 240 homes, it's not going to be built in a year or even two, probably, so. Any other commissioners have anything on this?
No.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve PUD, recommend approval of PUD 2044 with.
Subject to the technical evaluation.
Subject to the technical evaluations. Adding 240 units to the technical.
240.
240 units, yes.
I have a motion to recommend PUD 2044 to City Council, subject to the amended technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner LaFarge, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item 21 has been continued. We are at item 22.
Item 22 is case CPA 2024-8, consideration of our proposed map amendment to the comprehensive plan, changing the land use topology area designation from urban medium to urban low on land at various locations north of 50th Street. And Benari will take us through those locations and, and discuss that with some slides.
Benari Mujicortis, Planning Department. This is the CPA 2024-08. It's an amendment to the comprehensive plan, changing the UM, urban medium LUDA designation to urban low LUDA designation. There's three areas, four areas located north of, northwest expressway and north of 50th Street. You can see them, all of the big areas. There is where they're located in the map. Okay, so it's important to mention that even though this area was noticed, after we take a closer look at it, we decided that this apartment complex is going to remain in urban medium. It's not going to be part of the urban low. And this area too, is going to remain in urban medium. It's not going to go to urban low.
Just to clarify, if those are in my.
There we go. We just felt like a refinement, so we're recommending that that commercial frontage just remain as urban medium like it is now. And in the previous slide, like Benari said, though, I think there are condos or apartments that can just remain urban medium like they are now. But everything else, those are just some minor refinements that we would make from what was noticed.
Right now, we can see, it's important to mention real quick, that for us to make the decision to change this part of the, our comprehensive plan, this has been a, a process of almost two years, where even though the ADU ordinance was one of the reasons why we decided to finally take a closer look at this, we've been looking at these areas for the last two years. There's other changes that we are planning to do with a new code update, and after looking at these neighborhoods, we decided that these neighborhoods in a specific do have more urban low densities and more urban low, they look more like urban low neighborhoods, and that's why we decided, as a staff initiated CPA, to go ahead and change them to urban low. Zoning is one of the reasons, they're mainly old zone R1. In terms of the LUDA, right now, they're all urban median, but it's important to mention too, they're contiguous or they're abuting close to urban low, so it will be like a natural continuance from urban low. Other special considerations, for us to do these analyses, we did, we took a look at a lot of things, and one of them was, was what is the nation of urban medium? What we try to accomplish when we design or would decide, they did a designation of urban medium. Some of them was, what are the street types that are on this neighborhoods? We can see that these neighborhoods are mainly neighborhood streets. They don't have mayor streets close to them, only some minor connectors that are closer to them. Some other considerations that we did to take, to make the decision was how the undeveloped parcels or the empty parcels that are in these neighborhoods. We did see that there were some parcels in our most eastern neighborhood, but it's because they're mainly flood or forested areas, so we assumed that's, that's the main reason why they're not developed. Other things that we took in consideration is owner occupancy, occupancy of this. If these neighbors are closer to main bus routes or public transportations, they're not very close to services, they're not very walkable neighborhoods, and all of that is what makes them look more like urban low than urban medium. So the findings, basically, the, the proposed change from urban median to urban low designation is guaranteed based on the 16 development patterns matching urban low characteristics, mainly single homes, mostly R1. Neighborhood stability evidenced by lack of vacancy of our abandonment of issues corresponding to limited infield opportunities. Infrastructure system aligned with urban low services level. Their, their classification will more accurately reflect the area's current condition and development patterns, while ensuring consistent planning standards with adjacent urban low areas. Based on the finding above, staff recommends approval of the changing from urban medium to urban low. Any questions?
I think my question is, can we clarify what other, what differences of, of note there might be as a result of being urban low versus urban medium? Like, are there, is, are there any other implications, just so we're all clear?
So when we make the decision of designate something urban medium, it's because we consider those areas more appropriate for more density.
Gotcha.
Are usually areas that are closer to public transportation, they're closer to services, they're areas that can accommodate that extra density. These neighborhoods, when we took a closer look at them, we realized that they're not really that close or walkable to services. They don't really have a lot of service. They don't really have a lot of services surrounding them. Zoning can be one of the other characteristics. They're mainly R1, they're mainly zoned only for a single residential. Infield, when we decided which neighborhoods should be in urban median, was to try to bring infield. It was more for those neighborhoods that needed a little bit more density, not only because it was appropriate, but it was because we wanted to bring a little bit more density to those areas. They're closer to the core, they're closer to areas, it's more responsible for the city because we have already all the infrastructure there to provide those services for those neighborhoods. And that's one of the reasons, or that's one of the main differences between an urban medium and urban low designation.
That's helpful.
I'll just mention too, that with the zoning code update, it'll of course have implications there because the zoning code is going, is based on the draft zoning code. And what you will eventually see is context sensitive, so it's got a separate zoning code essentially for urban medium than you would for urban low. So if this were to change to urban low, the natural fit would be, you know, when they rezone, they would be, have an urban low style density or style zoning, which would be a little bit less dense than the base zone for the urban medium that would be applied to that area.
That makes sense.
I have a question about the boundary. The piece that's north of 63rd on the far west, what is in there and why, why is that the only piece north of 63rd? And how's that appropriate to be included? Yeah, way over there on the west, it's the only thing north of 63rd. I thought it was, yeah, at the top, at the north end of it.
This area here?
Yeah.
I...
What is that and why is it included? I thought that was a little bit of commercial or maybe some townhomes. I'm just surprised anything, why we...
It was originally UM. The proposal was to exit. We make sure all the commercial was out of and it will remain UM. So basically, what is going to be changed in is the residential part to UL.
Well, I think you're, so do we have a map that shows that? Just the actual LUTAs?
The LUDA.
Do we have a LUDA map?
Yes.
Yeah, there's one in here that shows the whole thing. Don't we have a LUDA map that shows the actual boundaries?
Try me.
There we go, yeah. So really, it could be left as urban medium. The reason that that whole section was brought in is just kind of a broad brush theory, honestly, just those can function just fine in urban low as they are. So it was really just to make it contiguous?
To me, it's not contiguous. To me, it's an odd shape north of 63rd.
Well, when it...
I mean, that's like saying, you know, another piece, we just catch a little bit north of 63rd, but when it's not necessary.
That's what's being subtracted there, right?
I know, but...
It will make it contiguous.
So that would all be UL, all that pink, so it'll, it'll all be contiguous coming down?
Yeah. It will make it contiguous.
You're saying what's north of it is already UL?
Yes.
Yes. All of this is UL already.
All the pale, all the pale yellow is UL.
So Don lied to me. I asked him if it was medium and he said yes.
Oh.
How's that bus feel?
You can see that it's a natural transition from UL to all of those neighborhoods. It's going to be like a natural transition.
I have a question, and maybe I missed this. Obviously, urban medium is much bigger than what we're seeing here. I think we had a slide earlier that kind of showed it in context of the city. Why are we just taking these pieces out? Surely, there's other pieces around the city that should be taken out, or maybe that's part of the future plan?
These, these areas came up during the process, you know, so when we were doing the accessory dwellings ordinance, these came up. And so we took a closer look at them, so it's not, it's not dissimilar to what we do with, you know, our urban low boundaries and adjusting those when a developer comes to ask for a comprehensive plan amendment. In this case, it kind of is associated with the ordinance. And so it was requested that we look at this. We did. And like Benari said, you know, this is, this is kind of a gray area. When we initially did the comprehensive plan, as you can tell, I mean, it follows this kind of broad brush theory. It follows freeways for the most part or large arterials. And similar to how we do with the urban low, that boundary gets more and more precise as we go because somebody wants to change their property. In this case, it would be based on essentially neighborhood boundaries. So there really hasn't been a reason to look anywhere else. We, at some point, we will. Staff already had some ideas in mind, for example, some areas in the southwest where we might want to expand urban medium in the future when you might see another comp plan amendment that's a ways off. There's no urgency there. But yes, we do look at that. We will be bringing forward another round of urban low adjustments that we'll recommend probably next year. But this is kind of what's before us because of the, it came up during the ordinance development.
We usually take a look at our LUTAs every two or three years. We do some changes. It's just that, just because of the nature of the amount of CPAs that are upcoming, we haven't done it. But it's something we do every, it's normal. The last one was done in 2019, I think. So it is, it is something that the staff usually do. We take a look at those LUTAs again and, because even when the comprehensive plan was done in 2015, we realized that the city changed and the needs for the city changed. So that's why we sometimes bring those, this stuff, initiated CPAs when we realize. These ones were just brought up to us and when we took a look at them, we realized it was appropriate for them to do these changes.
Any other questions? We have several signed up to speak, so. All right, we'll hear from them. I'll start with Diane Miller.
I live at 514 Northwest 43rd Street in Douglas Edgemere neighborhood. And just, I know that we met here before and discussed how adamant our neighborhood is against this ADU thing. But we first found out, or we had our first town hall meeting, August 20th, and the second one, November 6th, when the staff of Planning Commission presented their, or gave their presentation. And so we were under the gun to really get things going during the busiest time of the year for holidays and all that. We quickly developed an informational document that we put on all the doors of everybody in our neighborhood, and that's over 600 households. We gave information about contact people, we gave names and address, a name and an address where anyone could contact us and get, have us go to their house to get the petition signed, or they could come to my front porch or somebody's front porch where that petition was and they could sign that. Since that time, and we started this right at Thanksgiving, so we were working really hard. And I think that's obvious by the fact that we've got over 290, we've got 290 signatures on our petition and we're still working on it. Nobody in this neighborhood wants the ADUs, and I'm pretty adamant about that. We are, we, when we went door to door knocking to get the petition signed, we didn't have anybody say that they were in favor of the ADUs. Everybody was against it. One person that I talked to was really not interested in signing anything. One other person was located in the park and we approached them and they just didn't want to sign. But nobody said that they were really in favor of it. We're asking that the ADU ordinance not be applied to Douglas Edgemere, whether by adjustment of the boundaries of the UL or UM LUDA, or by specific exclusion of Douglas Edgemere in the text in this ordinance. We are in solidarity against it. We continue to build momentum against, and we are getting more signatures on our petitions. John Cussens is going to, our neighborhood president, is going to give a presentation about our designation as urban medium and it should be urban low and why that is important. We think that was inaccurately presented, that we were medium instead of low. We meet the guidelines of urban low and looking at the development guide for urban low, it talks about site design and it says, avoid developing within or modification of 100-year flood plain or floodways. As I mentioned last time, from Chertel down to Harvey and beyond, it's a steep hill going down to Deep Fork Creek. There's a lot of water runoff and along our backyards. When this, when Douglas Edgemere was being developed, the developers built retaining walls between the different lots, and those retaining walls have holes so that the water can flow through. It flows through with almost rapids, white raw water rapids through my backyard. I had to build a false riverbed to carry it across my yard so it wouldn't flood. If you were to build ADUs in the backs of any of these yards, it would stop the normal flow of water, which is not a legal thing to do. And it would cause flooding and backup to come up closer to the residence house or the primary residence house. And frankly, the flooding that's there already that runs down the back of our yards is pretty hard to manage. Also, in the guideline, it talks about utilize best management practices for stormwater whenever possible. And that's what they've done with, when they put in our neighborhood. I just now heard some discussion about urban medium and having access to transportation. And there is really nobody that's going to walk from Harvey Parkway, Walker, or Chertel to get to Klassen where there's a bus line. Maybe from Western, around that area, they might walk to Klassen. But this, that does not meet what we can do in our neighborhood. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just, I... I want a clarification question. So you, your neighborhood is not currently in the three, the four pink areas highlighted in this comp plan amendment, correct? Is that...
I don't, I can't tell from the...
Yeah. So are you, so we're trying to limit our conversation to whether or not these four areas are included...
The areas in pink are included?
Are included in this comp plan amendment, yes, which would be to move these, those four areas to the urban low, remove them from urban medium to urban low.
So you're saying that Douglas Edgemere is considered urban low and we're not, no?
No, I believe it's urban medium, but it's not included in this application.
Okay. I'm not sure what that means.
Mr. Chairman, when we forwarded the ADU ordinance on City Council, it was with the understanding that we would be considering comp plan amendments to address the issues of those neighborhoods that were seeking to be excluded. We have some of them before us today.
Right.
Based on recommendations for approval by staff, but they're not the only neighborhoods who are seeking that.
No, I understand that. There's going to be multiple comp plan amendments. We have one in front of us today that has four areas, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
You say that with a great deal of certainty, but there are only going to be comp plan amendments brought forward if we direct staff to bring them forward. And these people have come to be heard on that topic.
Okay. Well, so I guess, then I have a procedural question, which you know that I, and I have visited with Commissioner Powers about this, so to calm my neighbors down, I will also, assuming that, I'm operating under the assumption that Edgemere Heights meets the similar criteria that's been established for us to move some of these neighborhoods from urban medium to urban low. So I'm going to operate from that assumption. But the application before us today does not include Edgemere Heights. Can it be added? That is my legal question.
It cannot.
Today.
Because it has not been noticed, but we could bring another one forward. So these were put in here, just for the information to everybody. The Planning Commission Subcommittee recommended that these be put into this amendment.
Correct.
So since we did not notice any other neighborhoods, they can't be taken, the only action that can be taken today is these pink.
Is either to say yes or no to these, these being urban low or remaining urban medium?
Yes. But the commission or the...
Well, a third option would be to continue this until they're all included.
Expanded.
Yes.
Yes, but it...
But I understand that there is a desire to move forward with these. I just don't agree that that means that these folks that have taken their time to come down here and be heard today are not going to be heard today.
Did, I didn't say that.
Okay. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
But just to clarify, so, so yes, so no, we can't take action on anything that's not in here. We could bring, the Planning Commission could recommend that we bring other neighborhoods forward, or the City Council could, and then we could do that if that's the desire.
I mean, I'm happy to hear from our neighbors about their reasons why they feel like they should be urban low, and that's fine. I think, but the actual, real question that all of these statements are getting at is applicability of the ADU ordinance. So I, it sounds like we need to know from the neighbors whether the course of action, the best course of action is to say, let's, you know, continue this item, see if we, you know, if there is consensus that we would like to see the conversion of some other areas into urban low and do it that way, or approve this and then hear another comp plan amendment if, if the commission is supportive of expanding some of the areas that are urban low.
Well, so not to be too, put too fine a point on it or muddy the waters, either one. The issue for most all of the folks that I think you're going to hear from today is that they do not wish to be included in the ADU ordinance. The mechanism that staff has devised for what's in and what's out of the ADU ordinance is based on the boundaries of the urban medium. If that were not related to the ADU ordinance, I'm not sure there's anybody here who would care one way or the other, I know I would not, whether these neighborhoods are in or out of urban medium or urban low. But given that framework and that that is the framework that staff is using to make the decision about what the ADU ordinance applies to or not, they are seeking to be removed from the urban medium and returned or placed in the urban low. And they have some pretty good arguments about why they probably shouldn't have been urban medium to start with. I mean, I understand that it's not possible for us to put something into what's before us today that hasn't been noticed and hasn't been, you know, properly processed. But this is their, their chance to make that argument other than to go to council on the day of the hearing of the ADU ordinance and make a fight there. So I think it would be much better if when council is able to vote on that, they're able to vote on a clean package, that this is what's in front of them, up or down vote, so on and so forth, rather than having, you know, residents from numerous neighborhoods that haven't been able to make their case for why they should or shouldn't be included.
So, so then, what's your view, Commissioner Powers, on whether this should be continued? And then, we recommend, if there is, I don't know what the, where the majority of the commission is. So you know where I am, which is I'm fine with Edgemere Heights going to urban low. But if we're, but procedurally, because this is important for us to decide how, what we're going to hear today, are you for a continuance or are you suggesting that we...
I'm, you know, I am open to hearing what's in front of us already today without continuing that. If there is some consensus among the planning commissioners, that these future applications for non-inclusion will be, you know, brought forward. I mean, I think these people need a platform and need a venue. They need the ability to come and make their case. And my own personal preference would be that that's not on a Tuesday morning in front of City Council. So I don't, I'm not pushing us to continue this. I think, as you recall clearly from our task force meetings, these areas were discussed, you know, in some depth. That's not these folks' fault that they were not included or didn't get, you know, fully informed and up and ready and going quite as early as some other neighborhoods did. I think they've got good arguments to make. I think they've got good arguments to make about why they ought not be included. And so I don't have a strong feeling about whether it's today, or whether we continue this, or whether, I had not heard from staff the kind of assurance that there will be more of these coming forward. Just want to be sure that if, if that's a fact, that we're able to communicate that clearly.
I think that's important, that we hear, hear what everyone has to say and that we make a recommendation to staff to review these additional neighborhoods moving forward for a future amendment. That's, that's the option that I would prefer, to keep the work that has been done moving forward, but that we acknowledge that there will be further reviews and there will be other neighborhoods that are likely perfectly appropriate to be urban low.
And I agree too. And what I've heard today from, from the Protestants is that they don't want ADUs anyway, so there's no rush. They're not building any ADUs. They don't want them. So...
Well, that's a whole nother point that, I don't want to get off on the ADU argument because we are focusing on the comp plan amendment today, but I had a similar thing of, we don't build ADUs. Individual property owners that live in these neighborhoods may, if appropriate and allowable, through the permitting process of an ADU, be able to build one, but no one's forcing...
Hypothetically, because the council hasn't taken action yet.
Right.
Which is why my original question was going to be, should we even take any comp plan amendments without the council having made a decision about the ADU ordinance, if this decision is really based on the ADU ordinance? But in keeping with, with our commitment to those neighborhoods that we have agreed to in the compromise that was made when we drafted the ordinance, I think it is important to give them that assurance that if the council were to approve it, we will do what we said we would do. So that's why I'm, again, in support of this, but certainly am in support of if Edgemere Heights had a separate application to also go to urban low, I would support that as well. So...
And in communicating with staff today in a pre-meeting and going over all this was, I felt reassured that staff is moving forward with it. They are okay with taking certain neighborhoods out of the urban medium and putting them in urban low. And I asked if there was any conflicts and they said no, and so that's where I am. And I'm in agreement. I think we passed this today, listening to all of the Protestants, obviously, but pass this today and then move forward with additional, rather than delay today.
We can't take action today on what they're asking.
Right. Because of the notice issue, but we, but we can't, we are setting a precedent that review of specific neighborhoods with a finer grain touch than the broad, original broad brush UM designation is what we're interested in doing.
Yeah.
And so no one, you know, everyone is going to be heard and considered. I think I accept that at least.
But I wonder if we need to have, my mic's not working. Well, I wonder if we need a way that's systematic for us to do that. I mean, otherwise it's just on staff to just say, well, they came to Planning Commission, so now we're going to bring a comp plan amendment. Like, do you see where's the connection?
Let's request it.
Yeah.
Today.
Okay.
And identify those districts or neighborhoods and staff can report back on timing and when that can be brought forward, perhaps? Is that fair?
Could I say a few more words?
Sure.
So we have put in just a lot of effort in a short amount of time to get a lot of signatures. And we're, we're not here to ask that we be changed from UM to UL. We are here to demonstrate that we've done the research and the metrics, and John is going to do a presentation to show that we do qualify for UL and not UM. So, and also, that we do have a plan in place already where people can apply for PUDs. It's a process that's already in place and to get ADUs built. And my thought is, instead of trying to make this blanket change in what's going on now, why not streamline the process that's already in place and make it easier to apply for PUDs and still give notice and due process to neighbors in the area? So, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Powers.
Ms. Miller is from Douglas Edgemere, not Edgemere Heights. And that argument you'll have to make to City Council about doing through SPODs rather than through the ordinance, but good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I wanted to ask one question. I'm sorry, on our, yeah, I apologize. Ms. Miller.
I was anxious to get away.
No, it's okay. And I have reviewed all, every email I've received on this topic. I've looked at the signature pages and I appreciate that the Douglas Edgemere neighborhood specifically lists your, your objections and your points that the people can see, and they, they are valid concerns. Did you provide an actual copy of the draft ADU policy? Did, or were people able to actually see that?
It's online.
It's online. So you kind of trust that people have read or have some understanding of what's actually being passed? I hope. And really, I want to, I want to give credit to your petition. And I'm going to point out something that I'm seeing on another petition here, because I know that those speakers are coming after you, and so this is not directed at you, but it's not actually factually accurate, the statement is made at the top of the petition. So I appreciate all the signature gathering, but if people are signing something that's not actually what's being passed, that sort of clouds the, muddies the waters on, are these people really understanding what they're against or for? So anyways, that's really a general point, but thank you very much for your...
Yes, and we had a neighborhood festival in the park where we discussed that with the neighborhood people that came and had the ordinance there, so...
Sure, yeah. No, good work. I'm not being any critical of your process, but yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Michael Mans, Menes?
Given Diane's argument, what I heard from the commission, I'll let the Protestants have my time and they'll address the same issue.
Bruce Bockus.
I live at 3920 North Harvey Parkway in the Edgemere Heights neighborhood. And first of all, thank you all for your service to the city we all love and call home. I appreciate the difficulty of making decisions with several hundred thousand constituents that want to be heard. I stand here today representing the 97 Edgemere Heights neighbors, representing 66 different homes out of the 98 homes in Edgemere Heights, who have signed a petition stating their opposition to Edgemere Heights being included in the coverage of the ADU ordinance. We are asking that we be included in the proposed map amendment to the comprehensive plan being considered today, that we are urban low. And we are urban low by any measure. We're urban low. We're, we're so urban low, we're, we're really low. We're low, urban low. Based on the experience of those gathering the signatures, I'm confident we will gather signatures for at least 90 of the homes represented out of the 98 homes. And of the 97 signatures that were collected, only two people said they wouldn't sign the petition. And both of those, their spouses, signed the petition, so their home was represented. This petition drive will be an ongoing process, and we will continue to pick up more signatures on the petition. The conversation today has encouraged me, just what I've heard and, and everything that Diane said I could say. And so I appreciate the thoroughness of your, your presentation. But I stand here today disappointed as a citizen who apparently naively thought that the voice of the people mattered until today. And I appreciate what I've heard, but we have given sound reasons for the exclusion based on your staff's own language in three different emails and received no replies. Crickets. I've talked to Janice and I got a call from Bobby asking if I knew what was going on, and I did not. I stand here feeling ignored because after three emails, which included our reasons for exclusion and 97 signatures, our petition wasn't included in the staff report. There was 423 pages in the staff report, and, but our petition and our reasoning wasn't included in the staff report. That's disappointing. I stand here feeling disrespected after multiple emails. We did not learn, our request was ignored until we read it this week in the agenda. That's not how the Oklahoma standard rolls. Again, I'm apparently naive because I fully expected to be notified that our desire for exclusion was agreed upon and the change to the amendment was made, or at least the courtesy of a call or an email, a letter letting us know where further work could be done by staff to remove us from inclusion. So I stand here feeling forgotten but encouraged today, having been promised our exclusion was negotiable, and I heard that today. I would say, I would be more in favor of this being continued than being promised a further hearing, just based on my very recent experience of being promised negotiation but never hearing anything. I'd rather continue than move it forward and get the neighborhoods in on the first draft so we don't have to bother City Hall with multiple adaptations. All in all, I feel like what I'm hearing, which is nothing, is that your message is that you know better than we do what is best for our neighborhood and that our opinions really do not matter. But I'm hearing today that they do, and I appreciate that. So keep helping me have confidence that the process is going to work. I beg you to prove me wrong and set me straight and, and let my current conclusions be wrong and you be right. And here I stand, and I'm listening.
I want to assure you that your petition is in our, in our staff report. I have every page of it here, as is the Mayfair Hills as well. And so we have heard that and I'm certainly not ignoring it.
I've looked at it online. I've been given it to, out of staff's packet. It is not in there.
I'm holding it.
Yeah. It is here. I mean, we'll spread them out.
This is the back we received from the staff.
If they need to be inspected.
That's part of proving me wrong. It wasn't online. It wasn't what I was handed today. So I'm glad you were. Thank you.
But, but you do understand that we, as the Planning Commission, do not have the authority right now?
I understand that.
Okay.
That's why I said, let's continue it.
Right. It has to come from staff.
Until we can get it in.
To help us do that. Okay. Just so you know, we can't do that right this second.
I understand. Heard that.
Anything else for Mr. Bockus? All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your time as well. And Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Bruce Sankey.
I'm with Mayfair Hills neighborhood. We're in the same position that he is.
Can you come, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to ask you to come to the mic, please. We have online viewers that want to hear you.
We are in the same position that Mr. Bockus is. We submitted petitions. We are not included in the area that's being excluded, so we would like to speak another day in support of our neighborhood being excluded.
And just for, and just for clarification, what neighborhood is that?
Mayfair Hills.
Mayfair Hills, okay.
Give your name and address.
It's Bruce Sankey, 3108 Northwest 54th Street.
And you're here today, we're going to have public, I'm sorry, the ability for the public to speak after this meeting.
Excuse me?
I said, you're here today, we're going to have the ability for the public to speak after this meeting, if you want to just stay and do it then.
And we'd like to speak another day. Thank you.
I'm going to say it again because I think I muddled my words earlier, but I do want to point out that this petition says that we're changing the R1 code to reduce them to what is now R4. And that is not, that is not accurate. That is not what the ADU amendment does. Far from it, in fact, but I respect that you may still object to ADUs and I'm hearing those concerns, but...
All right. Last person I have is John Cousins.
My name is John Cousins. I live at 400 Northwest 44th Street, and I'm the president at Douglas Edgemere Neighbors this year. And I have a PowerPoint presentation. First, I wanted to answer two questions to Dan. I did have one person ask me about the code and I gave him the electronic link. And after he reviewed it, he was an architecture professor, and he said the ADU ordinance in the way it is, he gave a number of reasons why he thought it was unacceptable. And then with Don on the, which came first, the chicken or the egg? We have no one that wants ADUs, but we're complaining and wanting to be removed from that situation or that ordinance. I would say if it was first the chicken or the egg, I would say it'd be the real estate developer. Because we have a lot of development in our neighborhood. We have some small housing close to Western, and a lot of those are changing. The dynamic had been an affordable neighborhood, and it still is in many terms that I consider it, but they're building some McMansions. And so there are, there's already a lot of real estate development and asset turnover. And so part of the reason we're putting all this effort in is that it, we believe it will change the dynamics and will bring more commercially owned and rented house and property behind. So I hope that gives a different perspective on that as well. So I've heard what's been discussed with, what can happen or may happen, a continuance. It seems like that would be my preference, but I know you all are taking an open mind on how we get from here to there with this. So could you go to the next slide, please? This is a photograph that I think is really interesting because it covers two of the areas of two of the neighborhoods that are being discussed. And you may or may not recognize it, but that at the bottom is Edgemere Park. And right above that is the development that everyone's excited about called Lexford, the Lexford Development. I saw that presentation, it'd be 131 dwelling units on about 30 acres. And then north of that, you can see where Edgemere Heights was being developed. You can see the roads. And on the left-hand side is Crown Heights. Crown Heights was built during the Depression. And our neighborhood's north of that. And so the Edgemere Terrace Park was not built, it was platted in, I believe, 1950. Douglas Place on the west, you can see Douglas Park there, but a lot of the neighborhood was developed post-World War II with the same design and, I would call this the first northside suburban living in Oklahoma City, starting at, you know, just south of 50th Street. That's our neighborhood south of McGinnis High School. Okay, next slide, please. And here are a couple of pictures of typical modest housing in our neighborhood. A lot of it is, you know, it ranges from, I've seen the small frame hounds, 800 square feet, to ranch-style houses of 1,200 square feet. Our house is 1,700 square feet. And they're all, you can see on the one on the right, they're all real close together there. And that's just typical of our neighborhood. We have some of the original concrete, so it's a 75-year-old street. Okay, next slide, please. And these are a couple of our treasures. We have more. Our house was large, our neighborhood was largely built in the atomic era, the mid-century modern, and we're really fortunate to have these, these couple of properties. On the right, that's a fourplex that I think is owned or has been owned by the Belt family. It was built in 1957. And on the left is a really nice mid-century modern house. And you go inside the house, in the back is all these glass windows. And, and so we have a unique character to our neighborhood. We're not a historic preservation, but we are certainly mid-century modern, and it's really popular now. And my wife and I live in a ranch-style house. And some of what goes with that is a kind of a lower structure on the, on the buildings and... of a lower structure on the buildings and fits kind of into the landscape, and so that's kind of the nature. We haven't gotten to a point of trying to make it a historical designation, but it's certainly a historical neighborhood. And a lot of the lots in our neighborhood are, I entered over 600 numbers, compiling my numbers, and a lot of them have .1607 acres, and so it works out to be a sixth of an acre is what a lot of our property is, or conversely, six dwelling units per acre. And so, the next, please. So this is how the numbers work out. We have 599 R1 lots, and two of them are being built right now. That's real close to Westminster Church and School. That's, those institutions are within our neighborhood. And then we have some scattered multifamily housing, and when you add it all up, we are currently designated as an urban median, but the guideline is urban low is four to eight dwelling units per acre. Well, we're smack dab in the middle of that, so I'm not here to judge, but it makes me, without knowing more, I'm surprised we weren't initially just in a low-intensity neighborhood. That's what the numbers support. And then with our, for the R2, 3, and 4, we're beneath. We have about 10 dwelling units per acre, and it's some 1950s duplexes that are across the street from where I live, and they have garage apartments behind them. So these are numbers, and if anyone in the staff would like me to produce the numbers, I have these massive spreadsheets, and I think they're pretty accurate. I'm a math guy, and so that's what I wanted, this is a big part of what I wanted to come present, but these are the quantitative figures. Go to the next slide. I'd like to talk about some of the qualitative figures that, basically, some of this language comes right out of the staff memo, so excuse me for plagiarizing, but the support of the qualitative figures are also for our neighborhood. The top three are what I believe were in the staff report. Couple other things. They've mentioned no bus service. We have buses on Class, and our neighborhood starts at Western all the way to Broadway Extension. And it makes me wonder with not having service, we used to have service on Walker. I think a bus goes down 50th, but the bus department must have thought, well, we don't have any customers there. That's kind of an urban low area. I mean, we don't need to put a bus route there. So I think it qualitatively speaks to it as well. And then with one of these real estate developers, a couple of years ago, we had kind of a hot issue. They were wanting to expand R4 to put 11 units on a quarter of an acre, and we found out that, yeah, we have some pretty big flooding problems, and this is just kind of right behind the Will Rogers Theater, and you can see on the water, that's water that's moving, and there's a house built there right now, and we've submitted a report to the city. I think the Public Works, they did a lot of work on it, and they said, your drains are substandard, and we don't have any plans for those to get changed. And so with more impermeable spaces like ADUs, it's just going to exacerbate the problem. So I don't want to get too much into ADU. I'm really trying to focus on the map and the designation. And then the next, please. The stability, you know, it's exciting. And when I was here before, about a month ago, I said I considered myself a Oklahoma City pioneer, and I have several of my neighbors that are pioneers. We've lived here since the 80s, and I moved back to Oklahoma City during the oil bust. We had a seven-year recession. People were leaving town left and right. And when Kathy and I moved to the neighborhood, there were a lot of houses that had not had any attention in a long time. They, a lot of them had paint peeling off, and they just looked bad, and there were some empty houses, and we are glad to report we have a very stable neighborhood that's highly attractive. And come by sometime. We go to Will Rogers Sushi Nico or something like that. It's exciting to see what's happening in our neighborhood, and I fully expect it to stay stable. There's no abandoned structures. We really are fortunate to live in a neighborhood with our character, and when they built those homes back then, they were really top-notch quality, and I've had people tell me about how they constructed them and the level of attention that the craftsmen had then and now too, but I mean, we really have some nice properties, mostly owner-occupied properties, which helps with keeping the neighborhood, homeowners tend to take care of their properties better. And then we're proud of the institutions within our neighborhood. Westminster School is a very desirable place, and we fit together well. We work together. We have to meet like this with the school, but that's kind of what it's all about on a local level, government, so. And so a little bit more on the petition. I made a mistake. There's 290 signed petitions. I didn't update for the last batch, and we've just been started soon, but on the...
Mr. Cousins, I'm just going to, I'm just going to friendly ask if you could kind of wrap it up. You were allotted five minutes, and you're approaching ten.
Okay, just, why don't you just go to the next slide? And that's an ADU that's in our neighborhood. I'm sure it was well-intentioned at the time, and the land, the owner no longer lives at that property. He lives a couple of miles away, and I don't really want any more of that, so thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have signed up to speak. So I think the question is, we heard from, I counted, three neighborhoods that do not wish to be, or that wish to be added to this to be removed, which we can, are unable to do today. So we have two options. We can send this on, or we can approve this and then direct staff to do another one, or we can continue this and ask that they all be combined. So I kind of want to get a handle on what everyone's feelings are.
The question I'd ask is, has the ADU ordinance been set for hearing with the council?
It will be introduced Tuesday.
If it's introduced Tuesday, then when will it be set for hearing?
The next year, the first hearing would be January 31st, and then the following council meeting after that, I forget.
Then it sounds like we would have time, if we continued this, to just expand and vote on one time, wouldn't we? If we continued, and then you'd have to renotice because...
We'll have to renotice regardless, so...
And it'd be smaller notice.
Press up in here, but I'm not sure what's been...
True.
I don't know why, to me, it would make sense to go ahead and vote on this and get it taken care of.
And then just do another one.
We'll have to notice either way.
And that, that did occur to me too, that, but then there's also the perception of, in my mind, there's a perception of the neighbors that aren't included right now, when and if the next one comes forward, and it's kind of like, is it better just do it all in one?
So the other issue would be, and maybe it's small, but let's say the time is short or long that we address the other neighborhoods. Nobody's going to build an ADU overnight, but what happens in that interim period? What if it drags on for two years and we say we're talking to them, but two years, if somebody has two years worth of time to be building ADUs, and then we get around to addressing their neighborhoods? That is a smaller issue. I have a bigger issue of, you can say, why not move forward with this? And, oh, but the perception, perception can become reality, moving forward with some...
I'd ask the complete opposite question. Why are you moving forward with this if you haven't added the other neighborhoods? But I believe we could have an issue if it dragged on.
Let me just ask one question while we're getting information out there. How long, if this isn't even, the ADU's not even being heard officially by council until the 31st of January. How long would it take to get another call plan amendment proposal?
Could we vote on it before the 31st, essentially?
Yeah.
Because we'd have two Planning Commission meetings between now and then.
Right.
We have to, we have to notice, so that's the biggest, that's the biggest hurdle, so...
Biggest issue is the notice. We have to give, it's very specific about the timing, so I think the January could be possible.
The second meeting in January?
With all the holidays and with everything.
Which would be before the 31st?
The first meeting would be a little hard, but the second meeting in January sounds...
Oh, you mean the first hearing for, okay.
So the, so the December 31st is when the council, that would be their first hearing.
But they wouldn't be having a vote?
No, but that vote will come in January.
And then we don't know when in January that vote would occur? Presumably the first meeting they have in January.
Yes, although, yes, that would be the soonest it could happen.
Either way, we have to do the same process for the notice, so...
So the soonest we could notice, we need to make sure that we get the boundaries just right, and I think we know what the neighborhoods are.
The earliest that we could notice could be not, just because of the way the process is, we couldn't notice next week. We could try to make it happen for next week, for the notice to go out, but...
Is it, is it two weeks?
Yeah, that's what it is. It's 15 days. It's not really two weeks. It's 15 days, and that's what it's, it's a little...
With the holidays, it's complicated.
And then with all the holidays, that, with the days off, it makes everything a little... But just for the neighborhoods to know, we are already looking at your neighborhoods. We are already, it's just that we didn't have enough time to the process and the notice for this one.
Do another one, but they feel like they're going to be left behind.
For January, when is the first meeting in January?
So...
January 14.
We could have it, we could have it, because that's a month away, so we could have it So the next Planning Commission meeting, when's the next Planning Commission meeting?
January 9.
I think, I think for January 9th, I think we could try to get it done.
Okay. So while they're looking at that, my point would be, let's say we can't quite get it amended right before the City Council approves. Let's say it's two, three weeks delay. That's a short amount of time that we can quickly make this amendment after the ADUs are potentially passed by the City Council, and we will all be motivated more likely to be sure to address this amendment, the sooner the better. If the council has moved forward and approved it, then we won't delay for six months or a year or two years figuring out who else to be added. We will have the motivation to address this sooner than later. It does not have to be approved before the City Council's approved the ADU, but it will keep the pressure on to address if this was appropriate or not. If I felt like this was appropriate and we didn't need to add any others, then fine, but I believe we're going to end up, after we hear them out, we're going to add some... I don't think it's just a perception that we would not address it. I think it's a very valid fear by a very large number of residents that if we move forward this, we've lost the motivation and there's no incentive to quickly address their neighborhoods. I think we should be continuing, even if we can't get it addressed prior to the City Council.
I would, I would agree, and I'd go ahead and say, I'll make the motion, because I think we just need to just vote.
So we have to remember that the recommendation for City Council was not to move forward approving the ADU until this was approved, so that, that make us, that will limit what City Council does too.
I didn't, I didn't remember that. Tell me more, what's that? I forgot that.
I think we should probably look at the actual language.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was some language in your recommendation about that. I don't remember exactly how it was worded.
Yeah, and we look into the calendar, and for January, it's not possible to notice for January 9th. It's just, we don't, we just don't have the time.
If that's true, what that tells me, it reminds me that we did not want the City Council addressing ADUs until we'd addressed the appropriate boundaries. I think we're saying, we're going halfway on these boundaries. We're saying, let's do these, we'll do the others later. If we felt it important enough for the City Council to wait until the boundary was approved, we should be approving it in final and not tentatively approving the boundaries. It's hard for me to argue with that.
I will move to continue this, item 22, to the second meeting in January for the Planning Commission, with the direction to staff to include additional neighborhoods that have made this request. That's my motion, but I have a comment after we vote.
Do you want to list those neighborhoods now?
No.
Okay.
That sounds like a recipe for new people mad at us.
Everyone's going to come to their neighborhood.
All right. So let's, okay, that's the motion.
All right, so I have a motion from Commissioner Pennington to continue this to the January 23rd Planning Commission meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Mead. Please cast your votes.
Then I would, I would also ask staff, I'm sure that what will happen after this meeting is the next-door chatter will begin, and the great race in Ward 2 to see which neighborhoods can get out of it will begin as well. I would, I would hope that staff would consider analyzing some of these neighborhoods for whether or not the existing ADU ordinance is applicable to the neighborhood to begin with, even based on the lot coverage requirement. I find it hard to believe, because I think Edgmere Heights is a beautiful neighborhood. It's a wonderful neighborhood. I have friends who live there. I have been there plenty of times. It is wonderful. I find it very hard to believe that the ADU ordinance as drafted, it would even be possible to build an ADU in the overwhelming majority parts of it. And I think that should be an analysis that should be looked at as we're considering other neighborhoods to be included. So the lot coverage requirement was aggressive. It's going to be hard to achieve that in most of these places in the urban core.
But you, you have to remember that that is an item that is capable of being changed by...
Changed by council, yes.
By variance to the Board of Adjustment. Lot coverage, right?
But that's publicly noticed in a public hearing.
As is the height requirement, that it cannot be taller than the principal dwelling. So if it's a one-story house, you can't build a two-story ADU. We made a lot of compromises that I think make a lot of sense, and, but...
And reasons why they'd go back and ask UDs.
Right, yeah.
So...
We are where we are. We have continued.
We are where we are.
Does that mean that council will likely need to push their hearings accordingly? Because we need to get a final, I think that's what we've just agreed, right? The council, they can introduce it, but we can't, they can't vote on it until we have...
Well, that was our recommendation.
Yeah, they, yeah, they...
I mean, they, it's still theirs. They can do what they want to do. But I, for one, will be encouraging my councilperson to delay until we've made a final decision, and I think we all should do that.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our items to be heard. Additional items, communications and report, Planning Commission committees, anything? Planning Commission members, Commissioner Powers?
We had our final Division Zero meeting. You can talk more about that than I do because... But no, otherwise, other than just to tell people Merry Christmas and, you know, it's been great working with you this year, and I'm looking forward to working with you next Stay happy.
Thank you. Commissioner Mead, nothing? Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman? Commissioner Gouveen?
Nothing for the commission, but I did want to say to our Mayfair Hills residents, before you leave, I know your neighborhood well. My father lives there. It's a unique neighborhood. It's a wonderful enclave, kind of hidden away in the city. So I meant no disrespect to your neighborhood about my point on your petition. I just want to make sure that people know what they're actually talking about. My dad might be watching right now, so.
Just to be complimentary of Commissioner Powers, even though I give her a hard time, I do think you do a good job listening to your neighbors. You have a lot of neighbors who weren't happy about the ordinance. I, for one, am just still reminded, we made a good decision. It was good policy. I still believe it was narrowly tailored. I still believe we did the right thing. I hope that the council approves it, but I am willing to continue to hear from our neighbors who do feel like it's not appropriate for their particular neighborhood. I just don't want us to be in the habit of neighbors believing that it is a guarantee that just because you oppose it, or even a majority of your neighbors oppose it, that we're going to find that your neighborhood complies with the standards for urban low. Because I do think we're going to get more requests than this, and I suspect that there will be other neighborhoods. It makes sense for Edgmere Heights for stated, specific reasons, but it's, a lot of neighborhoods where it won't, so I just think it should be fair warning that I don't think we're going to approve them all.
My only comment about that is that, you know, that framework, that that is the way we decide whether the ADU ordinance applies or not, was not of our making. We didn't choose that. That was a staff thing, you know? It's like, and I get it.
Yeah.
Putting, putting it in that structure, putting it in that framework, makes it very much more difficult to decide that it is going to be applied here and not applied there, and in some ways that's good because it strengthens its enforceability legally and so on and so forth. But it does, on the other hand, make some people feel like their wishes are not being fully considered, so. And you know me, I'm all about the neighbors.
You're listening. You're a good, that's why you're a good Planning Commissioner.
Overthinking everything. Again, I go to the idea that... Again, I go to the idea that the urban, the ADU ordinance is making us make changes to the urban medium. The urban medium was set way before we talked about the ADU ordinance. Are we going to sit here and not approve an SPUD in their neighborhood if it meets the criteria? Absolutely not. So, what did we just do, is all I would say. We delayed, we delayed the inevitable end when we could have, at least today, passed and started the traction. And I believe that we, as a board or commission, would do the right thing and continue to, I mean, I believe we would.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not sure I followed you, but if part of what you're saying is, I don't know, we weren't, we weren't changing them to urban low but for this ADU. If we hadn't just, if we weren't moving forward on the ADU, we wouldn't be spending all this time changing these areas from urban medium to urban low. Nobody would be showing up. Staff wouldn't have sent out notices. We wouldn't be doing it. We would not be bounding and changing all these but for the ADU. So they go together, and I think it's best we get it right the first time.
As Commissioner Powers mentioned, so we did have our last kind of Vision Zero Advisory Board meeting earlier this week. So the consultant submitted a draft plan, so it's going through comments right now. Probably January, February, we expect to see potentially a study session on it.
Yeah, I'll ask about that.
Okay. So, so be looking for that after the first of the year. So, other than that, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I think it was a really good year, so thankful and grateful to serve with all of Planning Department?
So, yes, going along with Vision Zero, so we have two options. So just a little bit of backstory, so you can make your, your decision here. Vision Zero, this is a, this is a plan. We've been, it's a, it's a big plan. We had a large firm and subconsultants working on it to get it done quickly so that we can apply for $25 million in capital funding early next year. So it's on an aggressive timeline. We need to get it adopted or received by the council. So with all that in mind, so we expect to have it released for public review next week, so you can all take a look at it. In fact, we, I think we're trying to get a link set up, so we can send that to you anytime if you, if you would, if you wish, or you can just wait and take a look at it next week when, when the press release comes out. But as far as the planning commission goes, we could either do a study session, or we could simply just introduce it at the planning commission meeting and just present it to you all during that, and then you could receive, or you could, you know, adopt it or receive it, whatever we're going to do, the following planning commission meeting. So, either way, if you, the question is, do you want a study session, or would, would you just want to have it introduced in the meeting and, and present it?
I will add that it's a pretty intensive document of 150 pages or so with a lot of, a lot of information. And so it might be a lot to just take on, you know, being presented at a meeting.
Yeah, it would be a lengthy presentation.
So a study...
We're the only thing on the agenda.
So, personally, I think a study session might be the way to go, but I'll leave that to you.
How many study sessions do we currently have stacked up?
That's a great question. We have one scheduled for the 23rd.
I've been asked to call one on the 23rd of January, so that would mean you'd have two of them back-to-back. The 23rd? Well, then let's add both topics to the one on the 23rd for Jeremy...
And he gets an extra cookie.
I mean, if it's possible for us to... You know, I don't know how quickly they're wanting to move, and so I don't know how that, you know, stacks up against other things we're already sure we need to talk about. It is a lot. I mean, on the one hand, I don't think that there's anything in it that anybody's not going to want to vote for. So, you know, how, how important it is to understand all the ins and outs and bits and pieces, I'm not quite sure. But, or you could just trust the three of us that we went to the meetings, it's good.
That's what I say.
Sounds very confident.
Or, but, but I mean, it's fascinating stuff. On the other hand, it's really interesting, and it makes you think about things in a whole different way. So, you know, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other about whether we need a study session. I would really rely on the people who have not participated in the process to think about how bad they want to learn more about it, you know? Study session or presentation?
My, I don't know, we're not voting, but my personal opinion is I would be happy to hear it in a normal planning commission, even if that means it goes longer as opposed to spending that same time in the morning. But that's just because I'm working in the morning. But I don't, I'll go to the study session either way, you know? I don't really...
I think I agree with Commissioner Govine. Let's just have, let's just hear it in the meeting.
And we can all review it in advance, too, and kind of, you know, we'll be able to, anyone who wants to spend as much time as they want with it in advance of that is more than welcome, right?
Okay. We will, we will do an introduction format then. That's all I have. Happy holidays.
I suppose after it's introduced, if we decide we need to hear more about it, we could always schedule a study session then. But I really don't think there's anything terribly controversial in it. You know, I think it's all stuff people are going to think, this is a good idea, we need to do this.
Yes.
So...
Anything from the municipal councilor's office? No? All right, citizens to be heard?
Thank you for the life service.
All right, with that, I don't see any other business. We are adjourned. Thank you.